May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Conrad. Councilmember Silverstein. Councilmember Uring. Mayor Portembergins is absent. Mayor Stewart. You have a quorum.
Very much. May we have a report on the posting of the agenda?
The agenda for this meeting was properly posted on April 23rd, 2025.
May I have an approval of the agenda? I have a motion to approve or a second? Have a second? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Being none, the motion is approved. All right. We're going into a work session today for everybody, and this is a continuation of a meeting we had two weeks ago. Some of our formalities are going to be a little bit looser here than normal, but the objective today is to minimize the amount of time we spend not considering the items on the agenda. That's for us to work on. This is not a town hall meeting. This is not for you to have interaction conversations with us unless we actually ask for public comments. So just keep that in mind. Our objective today is to move these items forward to some conclusion, whether it's a full conclusion or not, but its intention is to get this moved along. We have three items to cover today. Treatment for fire rebuilds, geological study recommendations, and self-certification. We've got some time limits set for each one of these. Approximately 75 minutes for the treatment of fire rebuilds, approximately 40 minutes for the geological study requirements, and approximately 40 minutes for the self-certification. We're going to be on a tight timeframe. We're going to try and move quickly on this and get it done. With that, do we have a presentation on, I believe the first item is on sewers and septic. This is treatment for fire rebuilds. And I believe Rob is going to handle that, please.
Good afternoon, council. Tonight, or today, I have a presentation and I think it's, is going to show up there. There you go. So at the, at the previous special, special meeting, we went over three different, or five different options for us to evaluate and look at. I kind of want to go over those options real quick. First one was to connect the beachside homes on PCH that were destroyed by the Palisades Fire to our Civic Center Water Treatment Facility. Second one was to connect the beachside homes to Los Virginas Water District. Third one was to connect the homes to a new wastewater treatment facility. Fourth one was to connect the homes to Hyperion Water Reclamation Plant. And the fifth one was to get some cost estimates to replace, what it'll cost to replace the septics. So I'm going to, I'm going to go in detail on each of the options. I'm going to show maps first and kind of, you can get an idea with the length of pipeline and work that's needed. This is option one. This is a pipeline that's going to connect the properties to our Civic Center Water, or Water Treatment Facility. This pipeline would have to go on the very eastern edge of the city and, and collect those homes along the PCH, and it will continue westwardly to, to Cross Creek Road. That's where we have our connection to our treatment facility where the water, the water would go down and eventually get into the lift station, which is at Legacy Park. From there, the wastewater will be pumped up to our treatment plant, which is on Civic Center Way, right by Winter Mesa. So option one, I want to go over a couple of different options or the scope of it and the data on it. What I did is I took the capacity of our, our treatment plant. I looked at phase two and three, and it was able to reallocate all the wastewater that was, that was dedicated for phase two and three to those property owners on PCH. However, this option would require the regional board to modify the septic prohibition and move, move the septic prohibition to those properties identified in phase two and three to those properties on PCH where, where they've been damaged. Pipeline to actually do it turned out to be 32,000 linear feet of pipeline, and it has 461 properties. The costs I can see down here turned out to be a total of 188 million, and the schedule to get this done would be 65, 65 months. Keep in mind that this schedule is very aggressive. It has 28 months of construction on PCH, and I talked to a variety of contractors that are familiar doing work, this type of work, especially on PCH, and they agreed on the timeline and what would take to do this. It's a lot of work on PCH. It's a lot of pump stations, a lot of equipment that needs, that needs to go in there. One other thing that contractors have brought to my attention is that equipment for treatment plants, pump stations, pumps, and other equipment has been taken over a year for them to actually receive after they put their order in. So time to get material has significantly increased. And the schedules that I'm going to bring up are schedules that I, that I've developed that are pretty aggressive schedules, but don't take in consideration of any potential impacts from any tariffs or any type of issues with shipping material that's not produced in the United States. At the bottom down here, I also, if you take the 188 million and you divide it by the 461, you get about $408,000 per parcel to, to, to do this. And, and so that will come into play when I compare the septic system option. You'll, you'll see the difference. The second, the second option is quite a long pipeline. It's going from the very eastern city or limits, and it goes, continues up and goes up Malibu Canyon Road up to Tapia. A couple of weeks ago, I did have a conversation with representatives from, from Los Virginas. They mentioned that they would be acceptable for wastewater to their Tapia plant, where they can use that water and into their new pure water system. As you can see, this is quite a long distance to bring, bring wastewater to Tapia, and I'll go over that, the data. So this one is 58,000 linear feet of pipe, and it's, it's going up Malibu Canyon Road, and so you can see the challenges of going up Malibu Canyon Road. In addition to those challenges that we would see going up on PCH. This one doesn't, this construction estimate does not have any, any cost for the treatment plant. It's purely pipeline. It total is 261 million. It will take 69 months to get completed, and approximate cost per parcel will be 566,000. The third option was a new treatment plant. This one's very similar to the first one I mentioned. It has the same, approximately same length of pipeline, a little bit less, but it also has a brand new treatment plant. And you can see the treatment plant is not in the middle of the ocean. It's, it's, that would be very difficult to put. It would be, create an island and, no. It's, I put that in there because as, and a question mark because that's one of the sticking points here is that land is needed for this option, and a treatment plant location, if it's split up into two or three or one, would need to be determined where that is. But, but it, in any regard, it's same options or same kind of properties as I mentioned in the other ones. The construction here would be 235 million, and it would take, this one actually takes a lot longer because there's a lot of work and reporting and documentation to, able to get a new plant operating, and that's 82 months to get that done. This requires the extension of kind of collaboration with the regional board to get a waste discharge permit, and so I put that in there to, to kind of get the work done. So it's, it's, it's quite a long and extensive process to get a new plant. I mean, not only buying property and finding out where to put it, but it's also, the big thing here is the disposal of the wastewater. And here it's, we've got to figure out where discharge from effluent, treated effluent can go. There's a number of different options. It can be in the ground in locations where you can have acceptable groundwater where you can pump into. Or the other option, which is more, it's more controversy, is a ocean outfall. This one, this one turned out to be, cost per parcel was 510,000. The next option is connecting those properties over type to Hyperion. I had extensive conversations with the county of LA and the city of LA on how this can be accomplished, and I'm happy to say this is far best, the easiest solution to do. As you can see, it's, it's only 27,500 linear feet, which is not that bad, but the cost is only 124 million. It's going to take about 65 months to complete, and with approximate cost per parcel of about 269, 269,000. I went over very detailed on what is needed for this from, from, from the county and for the city of LA, and they provided me with all of, all the requirements. They provided me the location to where we would need to tie into, which is just east of Coastline Drive, and it would also require an agreement with the city to, to have these properties actually pay for the operation and maintenance. So that's a, that's a separate side cost that, that would, those property owners would have to pay to this, but this is the capital cost to build the infrastructure would be 124 million. And then lastly, I have down here a couple of options. I had, I had some minor repairs, but that's, from my understanding, that's, that's going to be difficult. That's, that's not on the table anymore. Septic, septic replacement, to replace a septic system, it's going to cost between 100 and 150,000, 100 and 150,000 dollars, and if a new seawall is, needs to be replaced, it's approximately $500,000. So, so here's a summary of all the options. You can see all the summaries. I'm going to, I will leave this slide up in here so you can see all the different options. But option one, just to recap, 188 million, 65 months. It requires the regional board approval. Option two is to connect to Los, Los Virginas. That's 261 million. Take 69 months. A new plant would be 232 million in about 82 months. Option four, which is Hyperion, is 124 million and take 65 months. And option five is replacing the septics, and that's going to be around 100,000 to 500,000 dollars to replace those septic systems. And with that, I will leave this slide up here, and I'm available for questions.
Do you have any more, President? Yolanda, you want to talk?
Just to add to the conversation on septic systems last time, council asked us staff to go to the water board and get a clear interpretation. So I have two slides that I want to share with you.
Very good. And also I want to mention, we also have Fran Pavlich, who many of you know, Senator, Assembly Member, Grua Hills Mayor, when I lived there, and she has a presentation she wants to make that's part of the project they're doing for Supervisor Horvath. So Fran, we're going to get to you in just a minute.
Is for the, what, what the water board stated.
Thank you, City Council. Just to add to option number five, so we can have the correct information, City Council asked staff to reach out to the water board in regards of the interpretation for our standards and our local agency management plan. And this is from an email that we just received from the water board on their interpretation. City staff along with the city attorney's office met with them twice. Water board also brought their attorney, and this is from their attorney. So this follow our municipal code, basically stating that under 15.40.90 point E, point two, that it states that a supplemental treatment is required for beachfront properties. Then they also provide us with interpretation for our municipal code 15.42.140 that requires that all beachfront properties need to include a new OWTAS, or an expansion of an existing OWTAS should be included on the secondary treatment system. So what does this mean? According to the Los Angeles Regional Water Quality Control Board, it states that they need to be consistency on, on adding a new advanced treatment system for all of our beach properties. This is under our local agency management plan for beachfront properties, and they are required to have this in accordance to the agreement that we had with the local agency management plan. They also stated in order for the cities to stay on compliance, the interpretation must be followed.
Fran and team, are you able to, do you have a presentation for us on the screen, or how do you want to do that?
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you very much for inviting me here today. Thank you, Mayor Stewart and City Council. Pleasure for me to be here. Just for the record, it's 10.6 miles from my home to your city hall, and it took 21 minutes on Malibu Canyon. Didn't have to use PCH or any other freeway, so we're neighbors. So I thank you for mentioning, I did, I served you in the legislature, and I really appreciated working with Malibu all those years, and feel free to contact me. But I'm here in a different capacity today. Hopefully, perhaps to be some assistance in the near future, but it's up to you, of course. I'm the vice chair of the LA County Blue Ribbon Commission. It's on resiliency relating to wildfires and using climate action kinds of techniques and things like that. I brought properly an expert, but just to let you know a little bit about the Blue Ribbon Commission, and I suggested to them that we come make a short presentation because we want to hear from Malibu. You're not the Palisades. You're not really, I have to point out, you know, part of LA City or LADWP, and you're certainly not Eaton Canyon and Altadena, but we're all in this together because we want to learn from what happened through these disastrous fires and things, so we are more resilient, not only structurally saying, but environmentally as well. So thank you very much for allowing me to be here. The commission was formed at the suggestion of your supervisor, Lindsay Horvath, and they picked out, it wasn't an open thing, chose 15 people, and just to let you know on the commission, we were appointed, no one asked people to if they wanted to join or not, but we were appointed to the commission with all different kinds of backgrounds. There's people that are experienced in insurance or building design, or people like Mark Gold is behind me on water issues. And so I'm part of this commission, and it's going to be relatively short term. We're making recommendations across several different areas. We have six different working groups, from water, which is why we're here today, to energy, to government finance, and there may be some information that'd be of interest to you on that one too, and a variety of other working groups. And the midterm recommendations, these are the working ones, draft ones, will be coming out this Monday, this next Monday, all right? And then we have about 60 more days until the end of June for final recommendations. This is an independent commission. We have no direct contacts with the supervisors. We're there to make independent recommendations. We're not there regulating, we're making recommendations. Our partners in all this is UCLA, and they have top research scientists and other people working with us and helping with the reports. So without saying too much more, because you have a long agenda, and very impressed with the way you started this meeting today. It was very informative to us. But with us today is Mark Gold, and you may already know Mark Gold, many of you here. He is the chair of the water working group for the commission, the county commission, and he's doing an excellent job on that. He does have a day job. He's, does a lot of work for Natural Resources Defense Council on water-related issues. So I want him to give you a short presentation, and of course, we will be available for any other questions, either now or in the future, and I'll stay and take notes. Thank you.
Good afternoon, and thanks Fran for that introduction. And I too was very impressed by the start of this because honestly, it means we were on point because that was one of our recommendations, was for you to look at all the various different alternatives, and then, you know, in very rapid fashion, determine what the pros and cons of all of them were, and then come up with a recommendation maybe as early as in the next 60 days. So that's, so at least we're not that far off, you know, from the standpoint of not talking to you guys directly, but seeing exactly what you did, which was good to hear. So I also am an adjunct professor at UCLA in their Institute of the Environment and Sustainability, and have a long history there. And if you don't know background wise, I was Deputy Secretary for Coast and Oceans in the first term of the Newsom administration as well. So what I'm going to do is just give you a very, very brief overview, just sort of the headlines of what you're going to expect on Monday. And what you'll hear is that there's probably not enough stuff in here that's related to Malibu and an unincorporated area that's obviously not in the Palisades. And so I want you to sort of hear, hear it for the first time, you know, you know, as a show of good faith here, but also realize this, this can be a dialogue the next, the next 30 days, et cetera. We're going to obviously need to have a lot of public meetings and a lot of discussions with decision makers along the way before the final, final recommendations are out there. But we thought it was really important to get some of this out quickly because you're making decisions as we see today in real time. And so if all the information comes out in June, you may have already made all the most important decisions, and so that's why you're seeing this happen. So the chapter itself is strengthening water system resilience and safety, and the group we have includes the former head of DWP, the head of Heal the Bay, and, and other folks. And we even had some external review from LADWP and Metropolitan Water District staff. We're kind enough to take a look at it and make some recommendations along the way. So we broke it up into a number of different categories, and the first one was assessing existing conditions and needs before rebuilding, and that's going to exactly what you just presented on. And then includes inventory wildfire-related damage to water infrastructure, evaluating progress on post-Wolsey utility resilience recommendations, conducting climate vulnerability assessments to identify high-risk infrastructure, and prioritizing hardening, testing flow rates and system capacity under emergency and peak demand conditions, and reassessing equipment and water supply needs if aircraft support is unavailable. And obviously, that vulnerability was all too dramatic for everybody. And then in addition, some other recommendations are inventory of wildfire-related damage to water infrastr, oh, I'm sorry, gone in there twice, that's a mistake. So the next area would be reduce exposure of neighborhoods and regionally and water system to wildfires. system to wildfires and other hazards. And so the recommendations include limiting the exposure of water infrastructure by setting new systems and facilities outside of high-risk areas, clear testing and communication of water quality, establishing buffer zones to help protect communities, protect water infrastructure and watersheds through erosion control and nature-based solutions, and implementing localized backup power for energy and water distribution to safeguard services during public safety power shut-off events, which obviously you experience more than anybody else. Another category is enhancing regional and local firefighting capabilities, including updating and aligning fire protection standards of water infrastructure design to enhance firefighting readiness, exploring temporary water solutions to support firefighting, coordinate refill locations for firefighting helicopters, bolster adaptive capacity through shared access to portable recycled and other water resources, increasing distributed water reserves for firefighting, encouraging the use of external residential fire sprinklers paired with onsite water storage to help slow wildfire spread, rebuilding parks and schools with large cisterns and direct release systems, protecting water pressure through strategically shutting down service, easy shut-off valves as well. And so, and then the next category is protecting building scale and property-level infrastructure, which would be implementing defensible space requirements at each site that integrate fire and water resilience, including Zone Zero. Where possible and affordable, improving fire resistance of piping, require backflow prevention devices on all residential properties, that's a water quality benefit. And then the last, oh, two last areas, the one that's so critical here that you just really had a great presentation on, leveraging recovery to expand resilience of the wastewater system in places currently on septic systems. One would be complete and evaluation of the existing septic system, onsite wastewater treatment systems and pipes, et cetera, on the burn properties, and assessing those impacts on the bay and adjacent beaches. Consider various wastewater management and conveyance alternatives. Malibu, with the assistance of others, is needed, should develop and evaluate the alternatives, which you're well underway in doing, so congrats on that, very smart. If Malibu determines to go forward with a sewer system alternative, then build the sewer system in conjunction with undergrounding all sorts of other infrastructure on PCH so that you're not doing it separately and tearing up PCH twice, if possible. And then the last category is leveraging partnerships and financing to enable rapid implementation, and that would include forming partnerships to support smaller, most cost-constrained water utilities recovery, developing clear mutual aid agreements amongst water systems to enable clear roles, responsibilities, and staff planning, local financing and rebuilding authority, temporary and permanent funding assistance, fire insurance and pooled insurance affordability, cost differentiated, new charges for water utility users, and no resilience mandates for unfunded system updates. So as you can tell, it's a lot. We tried to cover a lot of ground in those recommendations, and we really, you know, could benefit greatly from a dialogue with you on how to move forward. But we're trying to do the best we can and really trying to get this out quickly so that the decision-makers throughout LA County could really move forward on building resilience into climate resilience and how they're actually going to rebuild and recover from these extensive fires. And with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have. Or not.
I think it's time to bring it back up here to the council and start having some dialogue here. One of the things I'd like to preface this with, when we left the meeting last time around, the comment was made, we're trying to figure out which of our options are go and no go. And I think Councilmember Silverstein had it stated well, some of these will appear quickly on the no category, and then we need to see what we can do in the yes category. So I'd like to turn it over to the council, and that concept will be, if we're in agreement on this, is to have a presentation and discussion on each one of these. We're not going to have public comments until the end, according to our schedule, unless we want to change that. If we do want to have people comment before we take action on each section, we'll address it that way. But for right now, I'd like to see what the council has in the way of thoughts. And Rob, if we can maybe get your slide with the five options up there, back on the screen, I think that would be helpful. I know you just got set down.
Okay, I repeat myself. I just want to have a question about the format. It's my understanding that this is a work session, a work session between the residents and the council members, so if we wait until the very end for public comments, that's not a work session. That's basically another regular meeting that we usually attend. We might actually have some information that might help you in your discussion.
Let us have the discussion up here first, and then we'll bring it back to the audience. One of the things we want to do, though, we're, this is a continuation of the meeting we had the other day, and the objective is to try and move this forward as quickly as we can. All right? We will, all right, we'll take it as we go. But for right now, it's more questions with the council members, and Haylen, we'll start from the left. Haylen, you want to go first?
Yeah, sure, thank you. Rob, that was really impressive. Thank you very much for all of this information, because it does help clear my head with a lot of questions that I had. I still have a question. In your talks with the county, did Topanga come up as a possibility of a location? I have heard rumors that they're thinking about, pass the mic over to him, please.
You're talking about the Topanga--
Motel area they were thinking--
Yes, I did have a conversation with, with the Parks, Parks Department, who's running that, and they are interested in kind of looking at this idea. If the city proceeded on connecting that from the Hyperion, we would explore more and seeing if there are actually opportunities to cost share for that. So that's, that is an option that we're, I just recently just got with them, and it's more discussion is seeing if it's feasible for them, but it's, but it's a potential. It's, I don't know if it is, but it's something that they would be interested in looking into.
Great, just to keep that in our minds as possibly an option after all of these. I also didn't hear anything about how this would affect seawalls. So if we were to take one of these options, would PCH, because it's a state-owned highway, get involved because we're essentially shoring up their crumbling infrastructure?
So a couple of questions, or a couple of answers I'm going to say.
Sure.
If wastewater lines were used instead of septics, all these properties wouldn't need a seawall to protect their septic system, and so that could be eliminated from those properties. Caltrans is in the process of evaluating those seawalls up along their property line and seeing what areas they can repair. And actually, there's three locations that they identified, or they let me know yesterday, that they're in process of repairing. So there's three locations, they're in the process of repairing. As soon as more debris is removed on PCH, they're going to continue that evaluation and look if there's areas that they need to go back in there and fix. So Caltrans has already kind of, has made the determination, they're going to fix those areas where they need to be fixed.
I guess my question is like where Mr. Gold came and said to put everything in at once, if we were to decide to do a sewer, maybe to Topanga, I don't know, and then the PCH is then opened up and needs to be protected, that means no residents on the beachside do no longer need septics, they don't need seawalls. So then the seawall would go back towards PCH, shoring up the highway. Was that factored in?
No, that's, that's not, yeah, that wasn't factored in on that, because we don't know that situation, and if it's a seawall that's protecting or holding up PCH, that would be responsible to Caltrans. And they have already stated that if there's an area they need to fix because it's protecting their PCH, they will do that.
Gotcha. And then is there any discussion about selling water or reclaiming the water so that we can keep the water in our neighborhoods for firefighting in the future?
So option one is connecting to our treatment plant. That has the ability to treat all the wastewater into Title 24 water, where we can use as recycled, and that can be brought into different areas. It can be brought back to property owners that they can use it as recycled water for irrigation, but also can be used, part of it could be used maybe for storage, but it's, it's going to be limited to what you can, yeah.
So only option one?
So that's option one.
Okay.
Option three, same thing, it's a new plant, then we have the ability to kind of do that. You know, Hyperion, it's all that wastewater is going back over there. There isn't a recycled water line coming back. And Lost Virginists, they're taking all the wastewater, treating it, and they're using it in their pure water system for their system with Lost Virginists.
Gotcha. Thank you so much.
Okay. Hats off to Mark Gold, Fran Pavly, and Marilyn. I think I agree with you that putting a sewer on PCH and keeping that stuff from going in the ocean is probably the best solution we can come up with. The real question is, it's going to take us five years someplace to get it built. During that time, one of the recommendations was, is there something we can do with the existing homeowners to allow them to use their existing septic systems in the short run, okay? And then tie into the sewer when it gets built five years down the line? Because if they got to put a septic system in and potentially put seawalls in while we're waiting to get this thing built, the cost does become a bit prohibitive.
And before I pass it on to Yolanda, too, there's, there's something that I was researching, I haven't fully vetted it out and looked at, but there is other companies that have portable wastewater plants in big semi-trailers that can go and treat the water. It's, after that, where does that treated water go? And that's where I'm trying to, trying to come up with solutions on where that would go. But there's that option of kind of, I haven't really kind of figured out a good solution for that, but that's, that's something that I'm looking into, and I'll pass it over to Yolanda.
The Water Board was already firm on their response to us. Even on the first statement on their document, they state, "The City of Malibu Local Agency Management Plan allows the City of Malibu to provide local oversight of the LWTS given by the Water Board." And according to what the information we got from them, an advanced treatment system is required, or in the instance that the existing system is, can be used, a secondary treatment tank needs to be added.
If it's, if it's temporary in nature, though, it could be something that could be negotiated with the Water Board to make a change to our plan, but I don't think they would have appetite based in our conversations for a permanent fix. But if it's temporary, just to get us until the sewer is in place, they were very interested in getting that in, that system in place to, you know, protect the water quality.
I think for me, just cautiously, not overpromising, we will have to go back to the board and provide them, council is directing staff, it's going to take five years, what is the plan and how they, I just don't want to overpromise.
Well, I would just ask that Mark and Marilyn and Fran, if you guys have any influence in helping us solve that problem, we will take whatever you can give us, because I think the sewer is the right way to go, but we've got to make sure that we're not penalizing the homeowners on the beach because, you know, we want to clean it up. So whatever you can do will be helpful.
Yeah, thank you. And Councilman, you saved me, because I meant to say that something like that in my closing, so you just bailed me out there. So one of the things that I think would be really, really helpful to do, and you've already gotten a good jump on it, which is great, which is if you, as the council, create a wastewater task force, that basically gives 60 days, right? So it's not going to drag on, and people aren't going to talk about it forever. Come up with your top dozen-plus questions that you want to make sure get answered by the end of those 60 days, of which I feel like you just got half of those already answered. But that you'd want to make sure that you have a combination of, you know, a subset of this council, subset of staff, some outside folks. Fran and I would be more than happy to volunteer to do this, maybe a couple of community members as well. And then also, and this is the key part, you've got Lost Virginists, like all the leadership here. I would say, you know, you'd want them there, maybe Barbara Marrow from City of Los Angeles, who runs the Bureau of Sanitation on the Hyperion side, and then the Regional Water Board, who I have talked to about this, Norma Camacho, the former chair, and very close with the current chair, David DeHai. Where everybody is like, well, what makes the most sense, and how can we do this as quickly as possible in a way that's truly going to build resilience? Everybody gets that that's what this is. That's the whole reason this Blue Ribbon Commission was created to begin with, is to help out in this sort of situation. So that's my suggestion here, and more than willing to help on all of that, and, you know, we all, between all of us, have the connections we need to get the right answers. Thank you.
Very short. You got any questions?
Yeah, I have some questions. I want to start off by saying, Rob, that was really helpful to me. It was, it was clear, it was concise, it was factual, it was very matterfactual, and that's exactly what I needed to help understand this. So thank you for that. I do have some questions, and I'll, actually, I'll give you the headline is, I thought coming in here before getting the data that the choice was going to come down for me to the Hyperion option or the septic option, and after seeing the data, I'm even more convinced that that's it. Although I don't think any option is a good option, unfortunately. I have a couple of questions. One is, when you say the cost per parcel on all these analyses, first of all, what, if any, costs are there to an individual property owner to get their, to get themselves up and running vis-à-vis the sewer, if any, that aren't included in that? That's the first question.
So, yeah, a great question. These are all the capital costs for the infrastructure, for the main line. What will happen is the design will, that will have a lateral going to the house, and it'll be up to the property owner to extend their wastewater lines that are from the house to connect into there. So if their line is way back in the back of the house, they would have to extend it to the front, to the property line and make that connection.
What's the range of cost per parcel for that?
It could, it just depends, and if a home is being rebuilt, they would have a septic system going out to a certain point anyway. It could be small, it could be like maybe $5,000, $10,000, somewhere around over in that range. It depends on the length of how far they need to go. But really, it's, it's, we're bringing that lateral up to the property line, and wherever their stubout is, if it's 20 feet or 300 feet, it's whatever that cost is.
Okay. Now, you say that you gave us a price per parcel. Is that just simply dividing the number of parcels by the total? Would that be the way it actually would work?
Not, it, mostly, there were some, there were some condos in there, there were some, I think there was four commercial properties that I looked in there, but they were mostly residential and condos. And so from my experience with developing the phase one for our septic, our sewer system here, single-family homes were about a certain amount, but then condos were assessed a lot lower amount because they have less flow. So, but it's all based on flow that'd be calculated into what their actual assessment or amount would be.
Aren't there a lot of small, single-family homes, and also ones that have like two, three times a lot size?
Correct, yeah. So that would be something we'd have to look into, kind of figure out. There's, yeah, we have like for, when we were evaluating phase two for this project or for treatment plant project, we had very large homes were assessed, were going to be looked at for a certain amount of flow. Regular single-family homes like we have on PCH, they're smaller, those had a flow, and then you would have condos, which even smaller. So you would have a nice range of all those flows. And so each person's, or each property would be assessed based on their size or how big their house was, and there'd be, it'd be a proportion of that. So this, this is an average of kind of like, I just gave you a ballpark of what it would be. Some properties will be more, some people will be less, depending on if it's a condo, bigger home, regular home.
Would I be way off base if I would suspect that maybe it's $100,000 swing in either direction, depending on how small or how large your house is?
Could be, that's, that's a conservative amount, maybe, maybe a little bit less than $100,000.
Okay. On the first option, which I don't think is going to be a, I think, I think the first one's likely to be a nonstarter, but that would, if I understand correctly, that would eliminate the current phase two-- but that would, if I understand correctly, that would eliminate the current phase two and phase three, right?
Correct.
Okay. And so what would we do if we can't get permission to eliminate phase two and phase three? Does that make option one a nonstarter?
Correct.
Okay. Now, I'm still confused about the seawall issue. If if homeowners have to use a septic, they need to build a seawall to protect the septic. We know that. Are are the property owners building a seawall to protect the highway, separate and apart from their septic? Or how does that work? Halim is asking about that, and I'm still confused.
So if there was a seawall or a retaining wall that was at the property line of of PCH and the property, typically, that's Caltrans responsibility to put, to repair and fix. Depending on how that property was constructed, maybe the property owner built it and did it. But Caltrans has stated to me, they're evaluating those. And those seawalls or those retaining walls right at property line of PCH, if they're damaged, Caltrans is going to go in there and repair those.
So Caltrans has to pretty much go from Topanga to Carbon and make sure the highway is completely shored up from one end to the other?
Absolutely.
And I take it that no one can rebuild on a parcel where they need to shore up the highway until they've taken care of that?
Yes, I would say yes.
So nobody, but nobody's going to have to shore up the highway then? That's that's not part of their cost?
That's from my understanding, and that's not within this cost.
Okay. Now, if we have sewers, is the is there going to be water going, ocean coming all the way up to the wall that's protecting PCH underneath every house?
As Norma says, some cases. He can answer for me.
Until you get to a large enough beach where the house is sitting on the beach, right?
It's just depending on the location of where it is, yes.
Based on my lay understanding of how the coast works, I would think that's about three quarters or more of the distance from Topanga down to here. Is that right? At least, at least?
Yeah, that seems about right. Yeah.
Do we do we have an understanding of what that's going to, what that will do to the beach?
I do not. I'm not a, I'm not an ocean engineer.
One more question here. Let me see if I can find it. Oh, Yolanda, I had a question for you. Could we put the slide up, the last slide that Yolanda had? I think it was maybe her second slide. Right, okay. Now, I don't know if anyone can answer this or not, but are there going to be any material number of septic systems that haven't been damaged such that they would not require repair or replacement?
I do not have those numbers for you.
Are there going to be any? I mean, is that a feasible thing that might exist? I don't I don't know anything about the condition of people's septics.
Right now, we are in the face of the debris removal. So I don't have those numbers. They could possibly be a few homes. How many? I do not have those numbers.
If they do exist, do I take this to mean that since if they don't need to be repaired or replaced, this doesn't apply? They can just put a house up on top of it and start operating? Because it says if it has to be repaired or replaced.
Yeah. And so if we go to the slides before, it gives you the section number. Municipal code, I would say 15.42.140. It states that when you have an existing system that is operable and they can utilize, they need to include a secondary treatment box. But you can utilize the existing if it can be used, but you need to add another component.
That's, I'm just reading words. It says, it says if your development includes a new system or an expansion of an existing system, then it has to include a secondary treatment. What if it doesn't include a new system or an expansion of the existing system?
And I need to ask our city attorney because he also was in the meeting.
So we had looked at some options for, basically, any system is going to have to be tested. And the question was, if it fails testing, then it needs to be replaced no matter what. If you had a system that was intact and did not fail on an inspection, we had put forward sort of different ways that could potentially read the code to not require, you know, an upgraded system. And the Water Board disagreed. They just sent their analysis over a couple hours ago. But basically, they disagree is my understanding of it. We haven't a lot of time to process that since it just came in today. But the stance that they've taken appears to be that all the beachfront systems need to be upgraded.
Okay, well, you know, we've heard from a lot of people, and I don't know how this, how many of this is realistic for, but we've heard from a lot of people that they believe they've got a system that's going to be usable. Again, I don't know whether that's, whether they're right or wrong, but assume they're right, that they've got a system that that is usable, meaning it's not broken and it can accommodate whatever structure they place on, they place, replace it was there. I'm not seeing anything in any of the words that were provided to us in the ordinances that says they need to get a new system. But even if they're, let's assume for the sake of argument that our municipal code's being interpreted that way. Are we are we bound by some contract or otherwise not to change our municipal code to tweak that?
Well, they could rescind the lamp, and then we wouldn't be able to approve the systems anymore. So they have that hammer that would be hanging over the city. The lamp is is the result of a negotiation between the city and the water district.
They could rescind it based on our altering our municipal code to allow a rebuild that uses an existing septic? When there's no new septic being installed?
Potentially, potentially, yes. So if we want to go and change our system, it should be in coordination with them if we want to maintain our ability.
So it comes down to risk, right? If you would like to change it, the board has stated their position. And during the meeting, they were very straightforward to us. They even mentioned at the end of the meeting, this could make the board rethink of giving the permission to Malibu, having the ability to permit the systems. So what would happen? We would just lose the ability to review the systems. Property owners will have to go directly to the board and and get those permits.
Even if there was a system and it could be reused, it would be very difficult to do it. You wouldn't be able to increase your flow. You would not be able to increase your fixture count. So if you're rebuilding and trying to use a system, it would be very constraining. On top of it, it would probably be shortsighted because your system will eventually fail and have to be replaced. Right now, you have the opportunity to go and do that without a coastal development permit. And as everyone here knows, a coastal development permit is going to add years to to your your rebuild effort or what you're trying to do at a lot of expense. And they also will try to exact easements across your property potentially and and other conditions. So the ability to not have to get a CDP makes this the ideal time if you are going to, you know, replace your system or if you want a home with more fixtures or a larger house, this would be the time to do it.
And also a reminder, so if we lose a lamp, we lose the ability to do reviews for the whole city, not only for the rebuilds. So just want to make sure that council understands that risk.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, that's it for me. Thank you.
All right. First off, I want to thank Fran and Mark. Appreciate very much your insight on this. I know this is a Blue Ribbon program, and Madeline over there, too. Didn't see you for your hat. The the work you're putting in is critical. And I appreciate Supervisor Horvath calling this a Blue Ribbon Commission together. And Rob, good job. And Yolanda and Trevor, good research on this. You guys did exactly what we asked you to do. And as I think Bruce put it, it's very clear and concise what our options are. So thank you for that. I've got a few questions. First off, I want to make sure everybody knows, and I always think of the Big Rock and the Los Flores area. You know, what we're talking about right here is along PCH. So the onsite wastewater systems that have to be advanced, that's only for PCH. That's correct? Right. And as far as the mandate from the Water Board, the requirement to put an advanced system in is only addressing those places. We may be able to reutilize the septic systems at the other locations. That's correct?
Correct.
Okay. That is a sigh of relief, hopefully, out there with some of the people. I want to be clear about what they're telling us on the beach side. I've kind of put septic systems into three categories. There's the advanced system, there's the current working system, and then there's those that are deficient, like cesspools and things like that. Are they saying that if you've got a working, current system, that you have to go to an onsite wastewater when you do a rebuild, like for like, or not?
Yes, that's what they're stating. And cesspools are not prohibited.
Okay. Well, new cesspools weren't. But if you had a working system today, you have no choice. You cannot upgrade it. You've got to put the actual new system in place. Clear?
That is.
All right. So I'll be sure about that. By the way, on the idea of using the Civic Center wastewater plant, Rob, if we were to take that option, and it looks like it's probably in the no category, but if we were to take that, we'd have to take the capacity from along potentially Malibu Road, which is on the beachfront, and in effect, take the beachfront from that place that's not damaged to the place that is damaged. So we're really trading one one area for another. So, yeah, another another blow on that one. On the 461 homes, tell me where that starts and stops? Because I know we have, I think it's 320 damaged homes on PCH, but I know there's some that are not. So how far up PCH do we go?
So I went a little a little bit west of of Carbon. There are some homes there. There was like, there's like three or four homes past Carbon, west of Carbon. I counted from there all the way to the very, the eastern city limits. So I counted all of them along the way.
Okay. And is this the up slope as well as the beachfront?
Just beach.
Just beach only. Okay. In terms of capacity, we're talking about hooking, if you took the option of going to Hyperion, is this an open door to an unlimited capacity to have sewers in Malibu? In other words, can we, if you've got a 12-foot, 12-inch pipe or whatever the size pipe is, we can keep connecting on and on and on houses, hotels, and so forth? Or is this limited just to those homes?
You can design it to, it's, well, it's going to be a pump system. Because you have to, it's pretty long distance to get that, to get that wastewater flow from one end to the point of connection, it would need a pumping system. So that would require a certain size pump based on the amount of wastewater flow that you're estimating. The pipe diameter will also be designed based on that wastewater flow. So essentially, if you design it for a certain amount of flow of the pumps and the pipes, you can restrict how much wastewater you can put in there. So there can't be someone else that can just connect another line in there because because the line's too small, the pumps are too small. Sure, you can you can increase the size of the pump, a new pump. The pipe is really going to be your limiting factor because you can only push so much through there without damaging the pipe. So if you have a small enough diameter pipe going all the way through with the with the pumps and everything else, too, you could essentially restrict how much wastewater you can push in through there.
All right. And I think we already covered the part about a question on the interim. If if we were looking at a five or six-year plan, what do we do for these people that want to move in? I mean, potentially, we could have a bunch of homes built in five years. What do they connect to? And if their system is damaged, what do they have to put in in the interim? Do they have to put a full advanced system in? I'm getting a head nod, yes. All right.
The conversation with the board hasn't been of, what if the city decides to go with a sewer system? So we will have to go back to the board and see what what could be a possible solution.
All right.
As we mentioned, or Customer Ewing's comment, we would have to be negotiated, I think they do want the sewer in there. So they may be willing to approve some kind of temporary measures, but we would need to bring amendments forward in order to do that. We can't do it under the current code.
But you would have to put probably a seawall in. You'd have to have a, I'm talking about an interim until we get the system in place, right?
And we don't know, right? So we will need to investigate and contemplate those decisions. Also, the board might, there were two different meetings, and we were not expecting the letter that we got. So I just want to make sure that the public know this has been a difficult situation, talking to different agencies. And when you're talking to them, they're all in agreement, yes, we want to help you out. And we were so close. And and they come back and we have this letter. And that's my, that's why I recommend not to overpromise because we're dealing with a different agency.
Got it. Okay, thank you. Last question, and maybe this is Mark or Madeline or Pam, Fran. What about funding? I'm looking at these numbers like $180 million, $124 million. City of Malibu currently has about $100 million in debt. And now I'm going to put on my investment banking hat and say, if I was the underwriter for a municipal bond program, I'm asking for $125 million on 400 homes, and that's going to be the source of repayment. And they're sitting along a vulnerable Pacific Coast Highway, and they have 300 of them burned. Is this really a true risk that I want to undertake? So Fran or Mark or someone, do you guys have any insight on where the funding might come from? Yeah, we have, we have a consultant on this, too.
So.
I can get a better answer than this, but I'm going to let you know, course Prop 4 will have some funding availabilities. And that is, that's why your meetings are so timely, because that could be happening in this next fiscal year and approved through this budget process there. That could be. And there's some talk, and we'll see if it comes out in the recommendations on Monday through the Blue Ribbon Commission on establishing regional financial authorities. In my mind, it's sort of like a Rita Demont Agency on the light, but a way to finance these kinds of major infrastructure improvements on a regional basis.
All right.
So we'll have to look at that. But everyone knows that a financing mechanism is going to have to be part of the solution in addition to the people who obviously own the property.
$124 million is a big, big chunk for this town, right? We have a consultant over here. This is where I love our staff. I mean, we have a question, we have a consultant. Good. So please go ahead.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. As part of our rebuild efforts, we've been trying to bring on a different advisory services to help us. I have Joe DiAgost from Cosmont here to potentially give us a little bit of insight on some financial aspects, but we'd probably have to return at a later date with more info. But Joe, if you wouldn't mind?
Yes, thank you. And nice to meet you all. Joe here from from Cosmont. So our goal today was to hear if there is consensus on a subset of these options that would be more feasible to be looked into. And then we can really specify, more specific to the situation, what may make the most sense. But just to give sort of a teaser on where the direction might go, we are envisioning realistic feasibility for a bundling of a few different sources. Some may be one-time in nature, whether it's Prop 4 from the state, whether there may be something like FEMA funding at the federal level, a combination of low-interest financing from a source like the California Infrastructure Bank, IBank's ISERF program, which is a source that I believe the city has used in the past. And then there are some of these more innovative and newer sources. As was just mentioned, there's a mechanism called a Climate Resilience District that helps spread the burden of the cost, not only on this city as a public agency, but actually allows for partnership with another agency, such as the County of Los Angeles, spreading that cost burden among multiple agencies. We don't think any one source or mechanism will solve all of it, but we do think there are going to be a number of options that can be assembled.
Another thing that I wanted to kind of point out, too, I just got an email from FEMA. I am set up in a meeting with them. They have indicated that they are interested in providing us a little bit more information and options for for potential funding, hazard mitigation grant funding for for these for these options. But I think just, just like we mentioned, it's like, we kind of want to get feedback on what options that you guys really want us to dive into more detail. We can put together more financial kind of strategy on how we can do there. But there's a number of reasons, a number of ways we can get to the funding part of it.
All right. Thank you very much. I'm going to ask if we have any more questions here on the council, and then we'll go for a short period of time of public comments.
I have a really quick question. Just so I'm clear, if we do.
Just so I'm clear, if we do go to Hyperion or Los Virginas or a district, could the homes that have survived and have not been touched that are on septic tap in one day once their septic fails? That was answered.
Yeah, yeah, we could. If, if it's a situation to where council decides we want to move in this, but only do the ones that are, if a septic system is working, then they can do that and later on they can, yeah. It's just.
There's flexibility.
There's flexibility that you can, you can do all that.
You know, also opens the development question, which is something that we're always thinking about. Thank you. And thanks to our visitors. Thank you for your presentations and your connections. We appreciate it.
With that.
Question, this is for us actually. What's our goal in terms of when we're going to make a decision on this?
I'd like to push for listening to the public and then come up with one or two of the five items up there on there to give direction to the staff with some clarity about where we want to go, whom we'd like to have it come back. But I would, I think the objective now is to decide which ones our go items are. I think it'd be pretty clear, we know which ones are the no items and to ask the staff to move ahead with those recommendations. But I'd first like to have a very short series of public comments. And I'm going to constrict it. Some, we've had people in the past that have decided to keep talking and, you know, telling us the same thing we've already heard. I'm going to tell you that we probably only have 10 minutes for everybody. So I'm going to ask you, if you've got something to say, say it quick, say it fast and say it pointed. So let's start from the left. Say who you are and tell us what you've got to say.
Hi, I'm Danny Smith on the Costa Beach. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, the council. You're very smart, clear thinking and fair, which is all we can ask. I'd ask Rob to maybe reconsider his C wall cost, maybe double it. The quote I heard today was $16,000 per linear foot. One thing that you guys did for the colony in Malibu Road is those costs, those per parcel costs are amortized. So if you're asking me whether I want to pay $490,000 over 30 years or a million dollars next year, I'll take the former. I live in California. I can't believe I need to make the environmental argument, but you have the opportunity to eliminate the need for hundreds of new C walls that are going to stand for 100 years. We know what C walls do to beaches. I think there is a question about that, but I'm not a climatologist either, but I think we know. Last thing, you told the colony in Malibu Road homeowners that this is happening. There wasn't debate, there wasn't argument, there wasn't really choice. Now you have homeowners who are asking for it, who really kind of need it and you're hesitating. So I don't think that's right, but thank you.
Right. And please, talk quick.
Andrew Sheldon, Sheldon Engineering. I think a huge piece of this was missing from the conversation earlier amongst the presentation and discussion of council. And that is that if we're going to keep an existing septic system for five years while the sewer is being put together, what about the C walls in front of the septic system that was burned in the fire? I think there's actually a lot more C walls that burn in the fire than septic systems that were damaged. So the next storm that comes in is going to destroy many septic systems, whether they're existing damaged septic systems or advanced or conventional septic systems on the beach. So I think it would be great if you guys were informed by your staff about what happens, how many of these C walls are destroyed, damaged, fire burned? Can they survive for five years? Is that an acceptable condition to survive for five years while you're waiting for this sewer to be built? And the gentleman who was asking about the amortization, every one of these rebuilds is going to be financed as a lump sum some way. So it's all going to be paid back over 30 years anyway.
All right, thank you. Over to the left. I'd like to keep it down to like a minute or so.
I'm going to do my best. So at the end of the day, I heard a comment that we wouldn't be allowed to rebuild until Caltrans did an assessment on all the bulkheads at PCH, right? I happen to know that's false because I had a large dispute with Army Corps with three of my neighbors about this. So with the bulkhead, they wouldn't allow piles to be touched at the C walls because they cracked one. We wanted piles removed, they refused. Caltrans gave them guidance that since we had a C wall, they weren't allowed to touch it. So relative to Caltrans, they're looking at our C walls and saying they're okay, therefore not taking action at the bulkhead at the street. So we need to get some clarity and straightness on that issue so that there's understanding what you're voting to and what, what it really means up and down the strip.
Thank you. Right.
Hi, Mark, Marcus Beck, Lifetime Resident. My focus for today's discussion is Pacific Coast Highway and approximately 327 homes lost along the beach from the Palisades fire. I am suggesting the city of Malibu works in conjunction with Los Angeles County, City of Los Angeles in the state to implement the installation of a low pressure sewer line from Pacific Coast Highway to Coastline Drive, where it can be connected to the existing main line to Hyperion. During the installation of the sewer, mainline lateral tees to be installed along Pacific Coast Highway at Topanga Canyon, Big Rock, Los Flores, Rambla Pacifico, both of Rambla Vista, Carbon Canyon, Sweetwater Canyon and Sarah Road. During the installation of the sewer main, excuse me, the installation of low pressure sewer lines have been approved by Los Angeles County in the areas of Palos Verdes where the geologic concerns and constraints necessitate the implementation of a non-traditional system in the Twin Lakes Development located in Chatsworth, Los Angeles County. The low pressure system currently in use in LA County and throughout the state can be installed in an extremely cost-effective and low-impact process. My goal and vision is to find a cost-effective and feasible solution to expedite the process of getting PCH running smoothly and providing a means to help the community members rebuild. Simplified, Pacific Coast Highway is our most valuable asset for our population and the business that serve our community. If Caltrans has identified points of concern.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. We need to move on. All right. Literally one minute.
I'll be quick for sure. Carl Randall, homeowner. I didn't start the fire, but what I'm seeing here today is I'm going to have to pay for it. I don't want to pay for it. Governor Newsom stood five houses from me and said, we're putting a sewer line down the middle of here. Let's get him to pay for it. I loved what I heard from the Cosmont folks and Prop 4, whatever this may be, I don't want to pay for it. So find a way to get it paid for. Thank you.
Am I right?
Love, love Carl. Rob, and you gave me six minutes last time. I'll give you one and a half today. First of all, the cost of a sewer system.
One minute, one minute, please.
Yeah. Sewer system is not 500,000, it's 750 to a million dollars for each home. Second, if you kind of envisioned Dr. Seuss doing this, how would Dr. Seuss do it? He would take a bulkhead built entirely along the coastline. At the same time, he starts at the end, the end and the middle. And he puts in the low pressure sewer line that you're talking about at the same time next to it and putting in compounds where you have geologic problems. And lastly, on the interim, which is really a good question, what happens if somebody wants to build and company suggested a way to put the septic system in the other side of the garage? So one car in a unit that's being built with a two car garage could have a septic tank in it and devices that your architectural group that Mark suggested works to provide an interim septic system that doesn't take a C wall, doesn't take the return walls and coast, the coast is protected by the bulkhead is the right word for the coast highway built by the feds. Thank you.
Thank you. On my left.
My name is Arnold Bernstein. Rob, I have a couple of questions for you. The first is why did you stop where you did? Why not carry it all the way to the Adamson home at the beach and include all of those? Second question is, while you gave me information that's usable, I'd like to know, for example, what the cost per month would be? For example, I've seen sewer charges equal to water charges and all of us living in Malibu, we know what water charges are. Thank you.
Okay. Am I right?
Darren Graves, homeowner in Big Rock Beach. I wanted to address the concerns about future overdevelopment of Malibu as it relates to a sewage line. You could look north to Marin County. Marin County is also famous for beauty, environmental protection and stewardship. They have had a sanitation district with a sewer since 1899 at Ross Valley. It is the oldest sanitation system in the state of California, has 200 miles of sewer line. Marin County is famous for protecting the environment and restricting development. It should fall on the planning authority in Malibu to do that. And you shouldn't be concerned about a sewer line inviting hotel development and real estate over building over the next 100 years. If they can do it, so can we.
Thank you. All right. On the left, we've got two minutes. I'll take one more over here and one more over there.
Hi, Christopher Sonson. Rob, thanks for putting those numbers together. Those are very helpful for everyone. The one thing I'd just like to point out, when he's talking about the onsite wastewater treatment systems, he said it's 10,000 to 150,000. We all, or 500,000 including a C wall. As we ask everyone else, we've been talking to a lot more builders, we realize the cost is probably more like 750,000. And what I believe we're not exactly saying is that almost every one of those existing septic systems are going to be required to be upgraded. Okay? So if you take 461 properties times 750,000, that's 345 million dollars for the homeowners to pay individually, one by one, as opposed to doing even tapping into our existing 61 million dollar sewer system that you guys have already built. So option one could still be looked at because you already have a sewer system. So.
Thank you. One more over there, please.
Thank you. DeeDee Graves, I have a 1,200 square foot, one level house on PCH that was burned. I'm told that I want to repl- build it. I'm told that it's going to be smaller, it's going to have stairs, it's going to be different. We had a septic tank that worked great for 70 years. There isn't a problem with it. It doesn't take much supervision or management. An alternate water treatment system has to be checked regularly to make sure that it's still working. I think it takes electricity to run. We lose electricity a lot of times on the beach. So that's a problem. The highway needs to be redone. Now is the time to put in a sewer system. Government doesn't always do things in an economical way, but it would be very economical to do the whole thing together.
Thank you. All right. I'm going to do one more.
No one talked about.
Yeah.
I am quickly, I am very surprised that no one actually mentioned the fact that on every one of these options, it takes 18 months for planning and 12 months for permits. Surely we can do better than this.
Thank you. All right.
Damn, that was what I was going to say. This 65 months, 75% of it is bullshit like permitting. We need to focus on the people that are, the sclerosis in the, in the process, which is the government agencies. Let's figure out how we can get these designed and permitted and under construction and we won't have to worry about temporary septic system.
All right. Okay. It's going to come back up here to the council. I think what we'd like to do is try and come with some actionable suggestions to the staff. We won't put it to a vote, but I'd like to hear what some suggestions are.
I'd like to direct staff to look into Topanga being an option, please. What?
I couldn't hear you.
I'd like to, if this is the point where we direct staff.
Well, we want to see what the consensus is. I'd like to do.
I want more information, just a little bit more about Topanga being an option and possibly Los Virginas. I know, I need to learn more about that option if possible, please. And then I'd like to do the, the 60 day wastewater temporary committee that Mark Gold has brought up. I think that would be a very good option for us to learn more in conjunction with that. Thank you.
I think we should, we should do everything we can to figure out to put the sewer in, figure out how to get it paid for. I think that is the, that's what Malibu is about. We're supposed to protect the environment. That's the best way to do it.
What option would you like?
I, I, I'm, I'm down with four at the moment.
Okay.
I'm going to be unpopular at the end of this, but one, one to three are no goes with me. Four is a possibility. Five is a possibility. I suspect we're going to end up with five as much as the others are better. But, and I'll have a lot of reasons to explain for that at a future time. But I don't, I don't think studying one through three are worthwhile. Four and five are the options.
I'll quit when it's off. One, two and three, I appreciate the effort on it. I think those are the no's, are my go and no-go. Four is much more receptive, much more receptive to four than I thought I would be. I do think that we need to put four as the front runner and have you guys looking at what we can do on an interim. It sounds like there's not much room with the water board on septic systems. They either go full, full, all in advanced or they're not there. But we do, but do need to consider something in the interim. I agree with, you know, there's a lot of study time in this, but it's not, it's not a decision that's made lightly or quickly by anybody outside of Malibu City Hall. So it's going to take some time to get it done. So we need to have the ability to have a bridge process to get the homes built that want to get built while we're getting the sewer system in. So I would like to see if we've got enough support for number four as primary with a backup of working on the interim system until we can get the sewer system in.
This, this is what's great about these. We can actually talk to each other with, with all of us here. When you say Topanga is an option, do you mean like having a wastewater treatment system at Topanga?
I heard a rumor.
It's a different version of number three here?
It's actually a different version of number four combined with three. So I heard a rumor yesterday that they are thinking about doing a sewer system and it could be a rumor, but if it is, let's explore it. I'm also for option four and also getting rid of all of these red tape sort of things to, let's expedite. Rob, you're up.
So just to, just to, just to rephrase my conversation with State Parks, they were looking into doing the same thing that I was mentioning for option four, is put in a sewer line from Topanga going all the way to a section on there. So that was their, that's what they were looking into. And they are interested in proceeding forward on how they can be incorporated into if that option is something that we look, that we're moving forward with.
So that is option four? Oh terrific.
It's a supplement option for basically.
Correct. Yeah, it could be supplemented. It could be another partner comes in and pays for part of it.
So I, I support Doug, your, your suggestion that we just explore, continue to explore four and five. But I'll say, I, I really think anyone who wants to start moving forward should just be moving forward on the assumption that they're in option five because they may find out three, four months from now that option five is the only one that's going to be viable and why lose time?
All right. Go ahead.
I'm a bit more of an optimist. I think doing this, there are going to be a lot of organizations that be regional water quality that are going to look at this and say, this is the right thing to do. And I think if we, if we petition them as, as well as we should, we should be able to get some acquiescence from them to allow us to go through and do this thing and deal with some of the problems that have popped up. So I just think you got to try.
Okay. Do I have a consensus? So let's go with number four.
I'd also like though, in exploring option four, that we get the views of the rest of Malibu, not just the views of the people who have houses that burned.
Well, right now we're in the research phase of this. Yeah. Okay. Rob, can we, and Yolanda or whoever, what's the time? Do you think you'd like to come back to us with some update on this? Because I think you either can, probably would want to do it in a council meeting.
So this is, this is a, you want to explore the funding and everything.
I think we need to have, I think the first thing to do is make sure we understand the feasibility. Funding will come behind that once we understand the feasibility.
Feasibility as in to, I'm, like, what are you looking for, for, out of phase of option four?
I think if you were going to cone it down and say, if I was looking for an approval, what do you need and what, what's your plan if you were working on an approval? What do you?
It's, I mean, I mean, that amount is probably pretty accurate of how much we need for the funding part.
Okay. But how about, about your work progress? What do you guys need to get started? What's your, what would you want for us to give you the go ahead to work on number four and come back and say, this is what we're going to do?
So if we're looking forward to that, I think we, I want to look into potential funding or how we would go about doing it because there could be some options of how, the first thing we would want to do is really start with a design process, get a design engineer on, on board, look at the feasibility, look at kind of what the design would be, start making that communication and coordination with the regional board. But I think that part of it is probably upfront, is having some funds to start that process with, with our design engineer to get started. And then we can work back with kind of in tandem, look at different funding mechanisms and financial ways of kind of completing this.
Rob, I think you probably want direction also to reach out to the agencies we'd have to work with on this.
Correct. Correct.
Is that what you? Okay.
And just one more item to add to it. If we're going to look at the temporary solution, just like one of our speakers says, we need to look at the seawalls. And so we will bring that also to conversation, how much the new seawalls, even with a temporary solution, how that will work.
So it'd be appropriate to say, not the next city council meeting after the 28th, but the second council meeting in May, you'd be ready to come back? Yeah, May, what is it? May?
If, if council has consensus on making the expert water task force for 60 days, where you guys can work together possibly and come up with solutions, it might help alleviate your guys' workload. You could work, we have so many experts here in the room talking about funding and grants that it could be really beneficial, and I'd like to explore that. Do I need council consensus for that?
Let's see what the, these are the people that have to do it. What's your, what's your request from us? What do you need from us?
I mean, the first thing is having authority to have a, to have an engineering consultant come in onboard, to look at the feasibility and start looking at the, like, putting together a preliminary engineering report on what is needed to put that pipeline in the ground and what is needed.
That's how they want.
That's number one.
All right. And do you need funding for that?
Correct. So, so that would be the first ask that I would, that I would do, and that can be done pretty quickly.
Let's, let's build a consensus here to get that started. I think that's. Hold on a second. We can do it together. First off, let's find out what Rob needs to, for his side, and then we can figure out how to plug it into their operation. So you need, you need a engineering consultant, and can you bring us back, say, at the next council meeting after the 28th, the first one in May, with a request for funding?
First one in May or, probably the first one in May.
The first, first council meeting in May?
Yeah.
All right. For the engineering consultant, all right? Then as far as the task force goes, do you envision us working, do you have a task force ready to go, Brad or Mark or? That's come from us? Okay. Go ahead.
As far as a task force, it's great. It'll add to the process. I don't have the bandwidth. I mean, do we have, do we have two council members who have the bandwidth to work on it? Well, can it be one? You can have one. Okay, so.
We also have, just sorry, Councilmember Silverstein, we have a wastewater committee that I would also say that's, that's already an established committee that we could assign this to and, and bring them in to work with our public works team.
Let's do this. Why don't we start off with the wastewater group? And I think that's, Norm, you're one of the members of that and, okay, you share it. Bring that in, and let's see at the end of the first council meeting where you are and what you need before we commit to them.
Yeah, I'm confused which, what committee we're talking about. A standing committee of the council members? What are we talking?
I think the suggestion that just came up was to have the wastewater committee that's already in place, commission's already in place, work with Rob at this point and get started with the engineering consultant.
You mean the commission of residents?
Well, no, we already have a, we already have a wastewater.
There's an established wastewater advisory committee. This would be within the scope of, of what they could do if we.
Norm, who's on it?
It's Kevin Poffenberger, Norm Haney.
Norm and Andrew Sheldon.
Hold on a second. Can we, Norm, can you tell us who it is? I'll say it.
Madeline Glickfield's on it.
Who's on the, who's on the wastewater?
I'm pulling it up right now.
Okay, Kevin Poffenberger, Norm Haney, Madeline Glickfield. I think you might have appointed Arnold Lou.
So it's a seven-member body, and the appointees this year are Kevin Poffenberger, Steve Braband, Andrew Sheldon. The at-large appointees are Madeline Glickfield, Arnold Lou, and then the appointments from Councilmember Stewart and Councilmember Riggins still stand. Sorry, one moment.
I think Norm Haney.
We have Norm Haney, and we have Nick Brascichini.
I think if that's workable, that's, that's a pretty awesome group right there that could work with Rob and Yolanda to at least get this started till the next meeting. Would that be acceptable to everybody?
Yes, I'm fine with that.
All right, we've got the head nods. All right, with that.
Do we have to, hold on, sorry. Just like the mobile home park, do we have to mobilize them? Their active, their Brown Act body, they need to be noted for their meetings? Do you guys know when your next meeting is, Norm?
The commission, the committee does have a regular schedule of meetings. A special meeting can also be called if necessary, and the body is active. We don't always have business for them, but it is an active body with appointed members that is ready to meet.
It's a Brown Act?
It is a Brown Act body.
I, I think a Brown Act body is going to just go nowhere, because they have to notice meetings, they have to have staff involved, they have to have agendas. That's, that's just, we know that doesn't work. If a task force means one or two council members with an informal group of people that get together in a conference room however, however often they want, however long they want, they, they pull in whatever, whoever else they want to get information from, public can or doesn't have to attend. I just think creating, putting this into another Brown Act body is a recipe for disaster.
I agree.
Yeah, I agree with the task force. That will help out, and we can get, we can get everybody onboard kind of doing that. But I just want to make point of clarification is that I'm going to still proceed forward on bringing item to council, first meeting in May, to get a consultant onboard, because no matter what, I want them a part of the task force and moving forward. And then, and then we can start getting, working with the task force and kind of, kind of, kind of moving that way.
All right. Trevor?
To be clear, the, the task force will be an ad hoc committee of the city council. Are there two members that would be open for it?
I don't have the bandwidth for it. All right, we've got two, got two council members, and you can, you can bring in whoever you want to into this task force as advisors, which might just happen to be some of the wastewater treatment people.
Okay, to be, to be clear, then, this would be a motion from the council to create an ad hoc consisting of council members, Conrad and Euring, to advise staff or to work with staff in, in developing a recommendation related to a potential sewer connection to Hyperion, option four.
Right now?
Sure, we'll bring, that's, we can bring it back on Monday to create that.
After on Monday? Why can't we do it now?
Yeah, if we can just put it on for Monday, it's only a few.
All right, on the agenda for Monday, but that's where we're going. All right?
You're welcome.
And Bruce, thank you for catching the Brown Act issue. All right, with that, you, okay, Rob? Yolanda, okay on this? All right. All right. Thanks, everybody. We got one done. All right, we're going to take a five-minute break, and I mean, five minutes. At 3:41, we're back in session. Next item we're going to cover is the geology.
Yeah, we got to keep in touch.
I got his, I got his contact.
I'm saying, I mean, this, we're going to need some lobbying help, so we'll be back in touch.
Yeah, so I will tell you respectfully, don't kill the other alternatives yet, look at them a little bit more detail, and then make the right decision. I still think the part we need to do is, don't forget the water supply and power is a responsibility as well, so don't dismiss.
Well, I mean, besides being able to take your fight and bring it back to the city would be a big, big challenge.
All right, and plus, all the, all the projects that we need to get out of the zone, it's going to go by, but why don't just try and?
We'll talk, just, thank you very much.
Halen?
Coming.
Oh, there you are.
Bye, Fran.
Oh, those empty chairs, you guys moved over there. Okay, we're going to convene for the next item on the agenda is geotechnical study requirements. Going to lead off with Yolanda.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a brief presentation on geotechnical guidelines and geotechnical reviews. So we'll start.
If you're going to talk, please go outside. If you're going to be in a room, please sit down. Okay, please.
Geology and coastal reviews are a requirement through our development process and review process, and they, the purpose of it is to have safety and conformance with codes and consistency on our reviews. Currently, we have a contract services through Conshires. We have senior geotechnical coastal geologists as part of the group, and one of them is joining me this afternoon, Mike Phipps. We also have Christina Clark here. Next slide. The geology and geotechnical engineering standards are right in your, in the front of, we follow the CBC 2022, Chapter 18. It was adopted back in the winter of 2022. We also follow the Malibu Municipal Code. The city also has city guidelines for geotechnical reports, and we just released the new fire rebuild guidelines that we spent a little bit of time on it. I think with this, I want to state that the guidelines and the process that we do has always been there, so nothing has changed, except that every three years, we bring to council through a public setting, the adoption of the building codes, and under those, those requirements are for geotechnical and geology. The same thing happened for the coastal engineering standards previously adopted, even with FEMA, there's FEMA construction standards, the American Society of Civil Engineers, ASC 24, have their own standards that we adopt. CBC 2022, that was adopted on the winter of, of 2022. We have our municipal code. We follow the city guidelines for coastal engineers' report, and we recently also have put out the fire rebuild guidelines. During the Woolsey Fire, we had a complex flood charge that it was hard to follow. It didn't have enough detail, it was complicated, and it prolonged the process. And so this flood charge was created to give the opportunity to the design professionals and to the families to understand the process through what it was required, but it was following the standards that has been, that were adopted by city council. Next slide. So what is that we're doing different and learning from the lessons that we have learned through Woolsey Fire? We have created a fire rebuild geotechnical and coastal engineering guidelines that are streamlined, that are based on the codes that I just mentioned and the regulation that council has passed, and also provide a lot of guidance on acceptable reports. We have located them at the malibu rebuilds.org. We also have hard copies for any of our community members that are here. Uh, we also have hard copies for any of our, uh, community members that are here. A mass email was sent out last Friday to all of the design professionals. We have gotten very positive response from all the geotechnical and coastal engineers, uh, that normally submit projects. We also have, um, gone beyond just creating, uh, 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 rebuild guidelines. The geotechnical team has created, actually are using GIS mapping tools that are, makes it easier and faster to do their reviews. With the creation of the one-stop, uh, rebuild center, it has given us the ability to do a more streamlined process and meeting with the applicants. So far, we have met with 170. Uh, all of them have been given a geotechnical and coastal worksheet or, uh, and we're keeping in that information. Um, even when the, uh, the fire guidelines were still pending, um, our city staff and the geotechnical staff was, they were providing them with the information per code. And that concludes the presentation. I have Mike Phipps here. Uh, Mike, do you want to add anything to that?
Thank you, Yolanda. Um, I think the only thing I would add is that, um, some of these code sections that, um, all these rebuilds have to happen under, they've been around a long time. Uh, section 110, which is going to govern a lot of the rebuilds, beachfront, landslide. Um, it's been in the code since 1962 and it's been revised 19 times, um, over the last 60 something years. So, um, that is a very pertinent code section. Um, section 309, which became section 111 in the current code, same thing. It's been in the code for a long, long time. It's been revised three or four times. The city, um, adopts that every three years when they go through every code cycle. Um, I think that's all I wanted to add.
Do they might want to, uh, have any questions or any comments?
I still don't understand this stuff well enough to have an intelligent, um, position. I will say one thing though, and I meant to say this with respect to the sewers too. All of these rules we have that deal with, that are, that are intended to deal with new development shouldn't apply here. Wait, no, no, please, everybody, just, the intent of the governor's order, even though it's not the letter of the order, is to let people build back like for like as quickly and efficiently as they can. It may be that our hands are tied right now by these various codes that are outside of our control. But these codes need to be altered for the current project. This, these houses didn't need to be raised the day before the fire because there were geological problems. They didn't need new septics the day before the fire because there were problems at the ocean. We, we need to find a way to streamline this process in a way that does not apply to remodels that people voluntarily undertake that are more than 50% or to rebuilds. I mean, to, or to, to new builds. It just, that is the only way this is going to work. We, I mean, what the staff is doing is doing their absolute level best to find ways within the existing laws to facilitate rebuilding. But the laws are not meant to help 700 homes get rebuilt. It's going to just get in the way. We need to go to the governor. It's the only answer because unless these codes get changed, we're going to be in limbo. That's, that's my comment. I don't understand these rules enough to know how to get around them, but I know that they're in the way.
Helen or Steve?
I'm just interested, I'm interested in hearing. We got, we got a bunch of, I got emails with, from residents with a bunch of questions saying they want to, I'd like to make, make sure I understand what questions they have. And if those who have not been answered, let's see if we can get them an answer. So I'm just interested to see what they have to say.
Uh, let me say this much. I was a recipient of this package, uh, uh, last week and read it. And I have to say, I think the staff has done a marvelous job at trying to put a, uh, decision tree, for lack of a better word, on what you need to do and provide the clarity and the reasoning behind it. I thought that was very well done and, uh, hats off to you. Uh, this took a huge amount of work and I think your presentation about what we've learned from Woolsey is very appropriate. Uh, I agree with Bruce. Um, you know, this is sad situation that suddenly people who never dreamed at Christmas that they were going to be rebuilding a house, are suddenly in the rebuilding business. But that's the way it is and we are trying our best to get you back in the home that you had. And that was our statement to the governor. Get people back into the home they had before the fire. That's the reason for the like for likes and like plus 10%. So that was our, our request to the governor and for the most part, they came through with a lot of things in favor of it. And I made the statement early on that there's probably three things we're going to have to go through to get your like for like rebuilt. You're going to need to have conforming plans. You're going to need to get the fire department to buy off on the water flows and you're going to have to deal with the geology. Well, here we are with the geology. So, uh, I think, uh, you know, we've had some comments and questions out of this, uh, at the last meeting that we had. Uh, I think it's time to bring this forward for anybody that has some comments, but we want to move quickly on it. We have a hard stop today at five o'clock and we're going to try and cover through everything. And if you've, if we've heard it before, please don't say it again. We don't have a clock on this, but if you start getting repetitive, I am going to pull you, pull you down and let's move on to the next person. It's 3:54. Let's try and go for about 10 minutes. I see about five people coming up, maybe six. So let's go for like one or two minutes apiece. I'm not going to time you, but please be, please be diligent and the line keeps getting longer. So.
And just a quick note before we move forward, um, and, and thank you for your comments. Just want to state and, and, and just for clarification for the council and for the community. The building codes, um, the governor did not flex those requirements. So this are following the building code. The other thing that I want to remind everybody is, um, we don't have a lot of flat areas, right? We are seismic disasters. We have liquefaction. We have landslides. We had debris flow. We have earthquake falls. We have coastal hazards. So it makes it very difficult, um, when we're talking about rebuilding, but I just wanted to mention that.
Yeah, and I, and I understand that. And the governor did not address this, but I think the spirit of the governor's order was that people should get like for like back and, and, and the problem is that he didn't, the problem is that he didn't address this. And I think it needs to be addressed because that'll take you off the hook. It puts, it puts the state in charge. The state can give permission that overrides the state's restrictions. Whether we agree with them, you know, I mean, someone that's ultra conservative will say, no, you got to go by all of these numbers right now. You got to do it as safely as possible. Someone that's ultra throw caution to the wind will say, I don't need any approvals of any sort. I just want to build my house back. There's got to be some happy medium, but we can't provide it. The state has to provide it and I don't, even though that we have the ability to get the state to change it, we all need to do this together. I mean, you're the ones who, who it matters to most and we need to get to the state and the state needs to change this. Otherwise, Yolanda's hands are tied. She's got to apply the building code. Because the governor hasn't given any relief from the building code, whatever. It's as if you're taking a vacant lot and want to build a new home.
All right, we're going to zigzag back and forth and it's, uh, 3:55 roughly right now. Let's try and get this done by, uh, 4:05. As for that reason, please move quickly. Uh, Joe, go ahead.
So the reason you have the geotechnical engineers and geologists excited about this because they're going to charge us between 20 and $40,000 for a report, when we already have reports, I'm from Big Rock, that state we haven't moved in decades. I have here the 1993 geotechnical requirements from, from after the build. And they just recorded a recon report, which is basically a foundation investigation. If we're rebuilding, it's just our foundations, whatever, that should be studied because that's what we're building on. And if it's always been there, for like for like, they actually allowed them just to sign an assumption of risks. And they didn't even have to do a report. If it was up to 25%, they asked for this very limited report where they didn't require deep borings and no slopes ability, none of that. It was just a foundation report. And then the, the geotechnical advisor says it has not moved and that's it. And then we have Lori Berry from here, from Yay and Associates, who can confirm that our water levels are low, that our, that we haven't moved in decades. So I don't know why we need these, the 16-page, I like, I don't want to, I, my geotechnical advisor will say you need a comprehensive report. When I have not moved, I didn't move in 83. We haven't moved in, in 40 years. So, but if they're saying it because they want to make the money, that's, that's the problem. If we can have a report that's just for our foundations, that's really what we really need.
Thank you, Joe. Off to Abe.
Yeah, so, uh, within the construct of the codes, we have some levers to, like a.
Within the construct of the codes, we have some levers to pull. So firstly, the code in contention is 110 dot 2 dot 3 dot 6, I think. That, we get directed to that with the definition of new construction. Now granted, let's just call it new construction. Okay, I mean, that, that can be debated. But within that, it asks for a geo report, a geo study of source. But there is no definition of the kind of geo study. Uh, the report that Joe was referring to, the 1993, they talked in most instances for a like for like rebuild. So like what they're calling a, a recon study. And they define it very clearly, which is in a study of the existing site, the foundation conditions, the study of, uh, sort of a paper assessment of the historical conditions, and that's about it. No subsurfaced studies, no subsurface studies, which is what gets expensive. So I think we have some levers in defining the kind of what you've been calling the minimal geotechnical study. What is that? And to the extent we define it, I think we can manage costs and get this done even within the context of the existing codes without needing to bend any of them.
Thank you. Over to the right.
Hi, I'm Roxanne White, Franklin White. Um, I just wanted to say and echo, you know, we all didn't bring this fire on. We didn't want this to happen. The night before it did happen, our houses were functioning fine, our septics, you know, a lot of us had septic systems that were functioning fine, even though they may be determined by other people as, you know, not what they're doing today. And, um, you know, we were underinsured because most of us was California Fair Plan. We were canceled by our wraparounds. I mean, a lot of us don't have unlimited money. It, it's just like, it's, you know, half lots are going to be sold and, and you aren't going to get anyone rebuilding if you don't, you know, because it's, you know, only the really rich and, and deep pockets are going to be able to. We didn't ask to have to rebuild our house, you know, and I do think that it's very different than, um, if you are deciding to remodel.
Thank you. On my left.
So Big Rock is in, in effect, stable for 60 years. There was a small window of four years in between where a man-made problem made it move. It is stable for 60 years and it doesn't make sense to have any debate about that. In addition to that, we see on the news every two, three, four years, we see dramatic pictures of landslides somewhere in California. In Big Rock, we're measuring exactly what's going on and if something were to move, we would see it immediately. In those situations where we see those landslides happening, if they had those equip, that equipment in the hill that we have, they would have probably caught it a year, two years, a long time before. So Big Rock is in better, in, in a better position than most other areas in California. We need to acknowledge that and allow us to rebuild.
Thank you.
Council members, thank you for your earlier comments and remarks. Um, for the benefit of everyone else, the essential difference between planning and zoning codes and building codes is that the former deal with aesthetics and the latter deal with life safety. And over time, these life safety codes have gotten little by little, more and more and more stringent. And that ties the hands of everyone involved, just like council said. And I do want to say, I think the staff has done a very good job over time of maintaining these guidelines up to snuff. And I've had conversations with city's, uh, geotechnical staff about the guidelines. I think the approach they've taken is a reasoned approach that takes into account this sort of tragedy of the commons effect where if everybody, you know, if one person's doing one thing, it has this much effect. But if everyone's doing the same little thing at the same time, it can have a tragic effect on the whole community. Like a whole conflagration covering eastern Malibu wooden structures is one example. Those were all existing non-conforming legal structures. Yet there were many, 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 many of them all in a row. And when that right wind and fire came along, they all burned up. So that just goes to show what can happen. And, um, you know, I don't want to compare it to Big Rock and I don't want to, you know, make anyone here feel bad, but it's just an example of one of the reasons why city staff is treating this the way they do. They, they take their job very seriously. So I know everyone's speaking against them, but I want to be one voice here that's supporting city staff and what they're doing. And yet I, I, I get the point, you know, I'm personally, you know, I'm all about our ability to repair and maintain our homes. I'm not about, you know, big, big development, but you know, there's a certain amount of homes here, let's keep them. Okay, so.
Thank you very much.
One little thing about coastal, next topic is that. Uh, there's one little thing on the coastal guidelines I do take exception with, and that is the building safety staff jumping into the zoning law.
Thank you.
You'll see it.
Off to the left.
Hey, Janet Folk. Uh, my home burned in 93, but not in, uh, 2025. And I want to echo and support the kinds of things that Abe talked about and what Bruce talked about. Maybe by just giving you one example of a neighbor of mine in Malibu, these are Alan Arlene. Their home burned in 1993. They followed these streamlined guidelines in 93. Were back in their home relatively quickly, built, uh, tip, like for like plus 10% on the same foundation. Well, now they've been through the planning department here in Malibu and here's what they've been told. Okay, you need to move your foundation by at least five feet and you need to put caissons under the house. And oh, that retaining wall that you have over there, you need to take that out and add another 10-foot retaining wall in another spot. Now, why should that be needed now when it wasn't needed back in 93? And the house didn't, didn't get damaged by landslide, it was fire. So I guess what I'm saying is, why, why can't we create a set of guidelines such as was done in the past that allow people to rebuild in ways that are safe, but not absurd geologically? And I know you guys can do it. Thank you.
All right, on my right.
Uh, Darren Graves, resident of Big Rock, our house burned down. Um, I've worked with geotechnical engineers for over 20 years preparing, uh, big buildings, buildings that have $60 million worth of ton, or $60 million worth of steel, sitting on the ground, near water tables, hospitals mostly. Geotechnical engineers are very smart, but they are by definition extremely conservative. In order to stay in business, they need to retain errors and omissions insurance. And in order to keep their insurance policy active, they need to subscribe to the most stringent and conservative standards that they are aware of. Not that we are aware of, but that they are aware of. So they are motivated to actually design the most conservative reports in order to protect themselves more than the community and the clients. I say that as an advocate for owners who are building massive buildings all over the state. And while I respect geotechnical engineering and what they do, you need to take what they say with that in mind. Because they, they're about protecting their own liability and their own risk and mitigating that at the expense of the owners. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
First, thank you, Bruce. We are not building new construction. We are rebuilding our homes that went, that got burned down. Second, I take actually, um, I have an issue with the gentleman that said that we should not be criticizing the staff because we are not here to criticize the staff. No one is criticizing the staff. We are criticizing the process. We need to rebuild our houses. Um, third, I'm going to talk about something with the geotechnical, but not the actual study. Um, it is my understanding that the whole idea about the number of fixtures is to reduce the water into Big Rock. Am I right? I just need to see yes or no. Yes? Okay. So there are other smarter, more innovative ways to do that. There is something called a smart meter. It's a water meter. I have one in my house in Dubai. That smart meter measures every drop of water that comes out of my house. I actually get once in a while a message from the water company that tells me your consumption of water has increased by 78% in the last 48 hours. I bring somebody to look into it and there it is, there is usually a leak. We figure out the leak, we stop the leak and we'll move on. Because of the, this kind of technology, you can limit the amount of water that every house uses. You can increase the price tremendously after that. You can do whatever you want for people who use more water than you want them to use. My two boys will use the same amount of water if they're sharing one bathroom or if they each have a different bathroom. It just is. So can we be a bit more technologically advanced and move to the century? Thank you.
All right, Don, you're the last one.
I'd like to close the show. Good afternoon. Thanks for all you're doing, all of you, staff, council members. I'd like to speak towards the issue of the applications as they go through building and safety and sea level rise. Now, as you were very much
Don, that's got nothing to do with geology.
I checked with like three people, and they said, yeah, that was in front of you, and it was on the screen, so I apologize. I'll take that up with you another time.
Thank you. All right, back to the council. Who wants to talk? Any questions, comments?
Can, may we respond to some of the questions?
Go ahead. So with regard to the types of studies that were required in the nineteen ninety-three, nineteen ninety-four fire rebuild guidelines, I honestly, you know, if you're rebuilding what you lost in Big Rock Mesa, like-for-like, even like-for-like plus ten, I don't see why you would not be able to do a limited report as we have listed in these new guidelines. So I don't know why a study would cost twenty thousand to forty thousand dollars drilling borings. I don't know why that would be necessary. If you're rebuilding like-for-like in Big Rock Mesa, you need a report that makes findings. And the findings can be made by reviewing documents, reviewing the historical studies that have been done out there, and reviewing the current information that Yayan Associates has about the monitoring, and come to some conclusions about the impact of rebuilding this house to advise you as the homeowner. So, you know, I agree with the gentleman who said, you know, Big Rock should be easier because we have instruments in the ground. It's being monitored. It's different than a fresh landslide that you see on the news where nobody knows anything about it. That's true, and that's why it should be very simple to do a limited report on Big Rock Mesa with the findings made by the engineering geologist and the geotechnical engineer advising you of the risks. That's really all that's necessary. If you have to put in new foundations, they're going to need a little more information. It's a soil study for foundations. So I don't see this as as big of an issue as it's being made out to be, especially in Big Rock Mesa. Maybe for the people that want to expand in a certain direction, towards a slope, towards a problem area, towards the bluff. But honestly, I don't see the issue as big as you're making it out to be. These, you know, everything that's in the code, you know, everything that's done geotechnically is dealing with life safety issues. We're dealing with earthquakes, landslides, debris flows, liquefaction hazards on the beach. That's why this stuff is in the codes already. The codes have advanced over sixty years, especially these particular issues, and the codes are written specifically to address the issue of homes being rebuilt in an area that's, you know, underlaid by an active landslide. We have a code section that is specifically written for that purpose. And right now, all we can do is follow it.
Okay, one quick question. Excuse me. Ma'am, you can't have outbursts from the audience. After the meeting, you can talk to them. Yolanda, you have anything else you guys want to say?
No.
All right, I've got one quick question. I'm looking at the report for a limited engineering report. It says a limited report is not acceptable for properties subject to liquefaction, yeah, hazard. Is that, where is that present in Big Rock, or is it present at all?
That's just in reference to beachfront properties.
All right. Anybody else have any questions or comments?
Here's how I look at it. We're doing this kind of piecemeal. The discussion we're going to have Monday night about a project manager fits into this. The self-certification, which we're going to get to, fits into this. And the reason I say those things is, again, our staff's hands are tied. They're going to do the best job they can to enforce the law that they are charged with enforcing. And the law is strict. It makes the point that there may be some wiggle room in different places. But I actually don't want our staff, and I've said this repeatedly in the past, I don't want our staff finding ways around our rules, especially since those rules need to continue to apply to the other seventy-five percent in Malibu that's unaffected by this. And you can't act with two different brains, where one is trying to find ways around those rules and another is trying to impose those rules strictly and appropriately. Which is why I favor the self-certification concept, which we're going to discuss because that then puts that decision to be conservative or strict on someone else. Now, you may, you know, you say, be careful what you wish for because you might actually find out that the independent people you're going to hire to try to do your self-certification are going to be as strict, if not stricter, because of the reasons we heard discussed about the errors and omissions policies. But if that's what, but that's one possible way to ease the, to make the road a little softer to get rebuilt. Another possible way is the project manager because Abe, for example, is thinking of ideas of ways to make these approvals work that the staff is not going to accept. So I mean, we need a combination of self-certification and a project manager. The other option, as I said before, is to get the laws changed. But again, you know, and I agree with Sawa. No one here is criticizing the staff. The staff, actually, I'm pleased that the staff is doing its job and enforcing the law, and that's what they have to do. That's what they're charged with doing. And again, for the rest of Malibu, they critically need to be doing that. So we need to find a way to get this out of the hands of staff, and I don't mean that in a pejorative way, but in meaning, get it into the hands of someone who's not bound by the same constraints that they are in fact bound by appropriately. Get it into the hands of people who are looking for creative ways to solve the problems. And all at the same time, have someone from the staff or elsewhere that's auditing this to make sure that no one's really taking advantage and deliberately doing things that are unsafe. I think it's a one giant ball of wax. You can't just be looking at each of these things independent of one another. And again, so where I'm coming out is I'm thinking, again, I think we can't do anything about these rules. These rules are what they are unless and unless and until the state changes them or excuses them. The staff needs to apply them. The staff, I think, has been as generous as it can in finding ways to facilitate rebuilds consistent with the state laws. So the state laws could be changed, but that's not something we can do. We can go with self-certification. That may or may not help. We can go with a project manager. That may or may not help. I know it won't hurt. But I don't think there's anything we can do as a council, I don't think there's anything we can do as a community to get around the laws that exist.
I agree pretty much with Bruce, and I have a question. Would self-certification help this geo aspect of the rebuilding process? Because I'm unclear about that. I know we're speaking about it in the next session, but we might as well get the answer now.
It's two different topics. So we're talking about geotechnical guidelines and the regulations established by the state of California. And then the next topic is self-certification.
Gotcha. The other thing is the smart meter sounds like a great idea. Send me the specs for my house. Thank you. And I hear all of your frustration, and I share it.
Typically, I agree with Bruce on a lot of stuff he's doing, but Mike's on. Trying to find a way that we can enlist people that will help us work our way around the codes, I don't know if that's a good idea. I don't know where that starts or stops. You know, but you're almost going to need an audit staff to check what they're giving you bigger than the staff you got to try and prove it in the first place. So I just think that's a slippery slope we got to be very careful of.
Well, it doesn't sound like we have much leeway here on the codes. And I'll go back to the governor's original order. And by the way, just to remind everybody, February the thirteenth is when Tyler and Trevor and the rest of the city staff here worked with the governor's office, HCD, Housing Community Development, to come up with the proclamation the governor gave about how to speed things along. We were actually the lead in that on behalf of the city of Los Angeles and the county. So we put the best bite we could on this already. And the outcome was, you got to have a house that's built to the building code. That's the law in California, over Bruce. But here's the other thing. You talk about, you know, self-certification. When do you think it's going to go up for check? And we'll talk about this in just a second, by the city, who's going to eventually do a building inspection and construction. So that joyce that you thought either you're getting away with or that, you know, less than necessarily concrete, the building inspector is going to look at it and go, no, you didn't follow the state code. Now what are you going to do? Rip it out? So we're going to get to that in a minute on self-certification. But I will go back to this. I think the staff has done an outstanding job on this. You guys, you guys know what the law is. And also, remember, the building official is the one that has to sign off for the city saying that the building permit is legal. It has done the law. It's a law that's got to do. You're shaking your head no.
Yes, interpretation is by the building official under the building code.
Yeah.
So just want to reassure that. And I know council member Silverstein has a different opinion on that, but
But anyway, the point of this is that that's building permit that you get says that your house is going to be built to the code. And we're going to talk about this more in a minute. But I think we probably have covered this as well as we can. Bruce, what is the comment?
Yeah, okay. So most of us weren't involved in the conversations with the governor. So here's my question. Was the governor asked point-blank, can you also do anything about the building code? Or did he just not do something about the building code, and that's the basis for saying that he left it alone?
I don't think it was up for negotiation on the building code. I don't know.
Yes, he was asked. He was asked. And the building standard commission responded to that also. I can provide you with that information. I don't think it's closer. We will provide you with that information.
All right, Colin, you got one minute. Please go ahead, but this is, item's getting close. All right, then, vice of council, same comment. Sorry, Colin. Thank you. We already closed this out.
You know, we don't want to treat anyone unfairly. Other people could want to get up and speak when somebody else speaks. We had a time when everyone could come up and talk, and it's important that this is how we're setting this session up, and that's the rules that we set in place. Everyone's going to speak at the microphones, and then when that's closed.
It's closed.
You know, this topic will come up more, you know, and you can always speak on Monday as well about this topic as well.
Tell us about it on Monday. Sorry. All right, we're through with geology. We've got to go to self-certification. All right. Right, right.
Bruce, I think they're going to, the city council changes next meeting, right? And you will now be involved with the daily discussions with our lobbyists up in Sacramento. See if they can help us. And I'll talk to them, see if they get any suggestion how we get to the governor to fix any of this stuff.
Yeah, you're going to be the next mayor, yeah. And also along that line, I cleared out the room. All right. Let's go to self-certification, please.
I wanted to start with this seven-point four magnitude that struck Taiwan. I just also want to remind that the city of Malibu priorities has focused on preserving its natural resources, their rural character, environmental protection, and improving public safety. Next slide. Again, these are the effects of an earthquake. And this in third-world countries when they possibly do not have building codes. Just wanted to share also statistics. In the last fourteen months, the city of Malibu had had two-hundred-and-six earthquakes. Sixteen of them were magnitude three in the past twelve months, and three of them were magnitude of four. Next slide. I think the whole afternoon, we have talked about the complexity that Malibu has. One thing to remind everybody and why this is important to talk about it before self-certification is that we are in a geological hazardous area with seismic hazardous liquefaction, seismic slope failure, landslides, debris flows, earthquake falls, coastal hazards. So where are we right now streamlining the process for rebuild? A rebuild center was created in order to help streamline the process. We have seen more than a hundred and seventy families. We had put together a community meetings. The planning process following the executive order from the governors is being streamlined in a way that now all of the reviews are being done under building and safety. There is not a two-step. Council has allowed us to have a robust contract services consultants to accelerate the process, not only on reviews, but also on inspections. We also have, today is, this week was the first year anniversary of the development portal, a tool that was created for the community. We, so far, we have seen more than thirteen thousand documents. That means plan checks, reports submitted and reviewed. We have seen more than one thousand applicants now being registered to use this portal. We are utilizing Blue Beam to expedite our reviews and electronic review. Building code and the history of building code. It was crucial for the state of California and also for the host United States to ensure public safety, health, general welfare by establishing minimum standards for construction. The current building codes are not only in California. They're all over the state of California. If you go to Mexico, they do not have building codes. It was done to protect the occupants, to minimize the risk, to ensure a safety community, to improve building performance, to safeguard the community and the lives of those people. The California Code of Regulations has multiple titles. We follow Title Twenty-Four of the building code standards. Under that, there is twelve volumes that your buildings and safety staff, your fire department staff follows, your geotechnical staff follows, your environmental health follows. In addition, there is structural code standards. They were put in place by the state of California with the help of the structural engineers. The American Society of Civil Engineers has their minimal design loads in building for structures. We have a specific standards in building codes for wood construction. We have a specific structure standards for concrete. We have a specific standards for steel. We have a specific standards for masonry. And this didn't start yesterday. It has been, it has been for a long time. So self-certification. And this didn't start yesterday. It has been, it has been for a long time. So self certification. As you consider self certification in construction, it's not authorized by the building code, nor is prohibited by the state law. But it is prohibited by the building code pursuant to state law, fire, public health, and building. Some of the sections that is important to mention, and on their volume one, part two of the building code, Title 24, it stays item by item. 101.2 has the purpose and intent of the code. 104.2 establishes the powers and the duties of the building official. 106.1, if, it gives you permit requirements. 106.4.2 talks about plans and specifications. 108.1 established inspections in where they are required. All of these standards and all of these sections has been there for many, many years. Yes, we are hearing that several cities are moving into a possibility of self certification. We have learned that New York City has implemented a self certification program since 1995, which eliminates building code plan review process. The program is valid for all scope except for subdivisions and demolitions. But they need, they are requiring construction inspections. As the construction inspections move forward, if they feel that there is discrepancy, the projects come back to them and they are re-reviewed by their building department. San Diego County, San Diego County also has established a self certification program that commence on 2021. The program eliminates plan check review for building and grading plans for certain scope of work, not for everything. Projects must still obtain all of the planning, zoning, health, fire approvals necessary for the application. Construction inspections are still required. And this happens the same if during the audits, if the plans and inspections do not comply with the code, they come back and they're, they need to be submitted to the building and safety. For re-review, City of Bellflower, the City of Bellflower established their self certification in 2015. Their program eliminates plan check reviews for any project types, but does not eliminate the review process for other agencies. Construction inspection is still required. There was an article that it was mentioned during the last presentation, and I just want to make sure that it's out for the public. It's public CEO, and it talks about the risk on when it's allowed to move forward with a self certification. Additionally, there's some consideration that I want the council to take in consideration. We have learned that it does not accelerate the global permitting process on the type of self certifications that other cities have adopted. The permits cannot be issued until all of the departments and agency approvals are provided. So in the case of San Diego County, they need to go through the fire department, through the planning department, through the environmental health department, or, and after everything has completed, then the plans are approved. If auditing process is included, it will be critical in this, the discrepancies will be, if they're discovered, the audits will increase the construction and increase the cost for the owner. Example, we are in a very high fire hazardous area. The amount of features that are required under chapter seven, eight, on the type of construction that is required on that, even the size of your vents, that is required to be one eighth inch. All of that is having quality control. And so it's just something to consider. Potential for shifting corrections of the non-code compliance building plans to an inspection phase, where the cost to time and materials are significantly higher to be called compliance with code and local regulations. Think of a foundation system and piles, and it's a foundation system that is on the beach. Self certification, and they will miss, I don't know, the size of the river. When the inspectors goes out there and the, everything that's being put in place, they will need to come back to the building department for review and audit and make sure that that's complies. That is going to create a significant cost in materials and delay construction. There's also another item, potential significant impasse to insurance and policy for increased risk, including homeowner's insurance and professional liability and insurance. Potential reduction on your standards and quality control. I think the question for council and for me, as your building official, are you willing to compromise the safety of your whole community to an independent review, where they could be risk and errors of oversight in design, and they might not be unnoticed? And that concludes my presentation.
Any council members have any comments?
Lot of questions. Thank you for the presentation, Yolanda. It was unclear, is Los Angeles, Alstina, and Pasadena, did they adopt this? I'm trying to read through the article. Are they self certifying?
City of Bell did. I understand the City of LA is considering. I have not seen their, their final document, talking to their building official. Their building official is going to be proposing only for flat areas, not hillside, not coastal areas.
If I could, Yolanda, let me, I'm going to pull Bruce and give a little read into some of my notes here. And nothing against Bruce, I think he does a good job at putting the facts on the table. So, the article you saw up there from Cal Matters, that's a nonprofit news service that's political in nature, covers policies in California. I'm going to read just some excerpts out of that. And I've got a few copies here if anybody wants it. But let me, first off, address the LA County, LA City issue. I have a copy of it. They issued it on the 22nd. It's a pilot test. And as Yolanda mentioned, it starts to go down the list and excludes, let's see, excludes, let's see, geological and soil that, areas that are geologically sensitive, areas that are next to steep slopes, or potential landslides, and steeper than two to one. So, it's very reduced. And I looked at the map for Palisades, and most of Palisades where the fire took place, this isn't going to work. So, for the people that are saying LA's doing it, it's not going to apply to most of the Palisades burn area. But let me read you some excerpts out of this piece here. And I'm going to state right off the bat that I'm not in favor of self certification. So you'll, you'll understand my point here. Over the last four years, this is Los Angeles, the median length of time required to get a permit approved on a, construct a single family home in Los Angeles city was nearly eight months. And according to real estate data firm ATC, for apartment projects, it was 10 months. So you can imagine what it's going to be with all the home rebuilds they have. In San Diego, Assemblymember Chris Ward introduced a state bill that would give small building projects, developers the ability to hire a third-party licensed architect or engineer to sign off on the project's plans if the city's planning department is too slow. That's a state bill that's in motion right now. But one of the things Malibu found, and we started to work on it last year, but we got distracted by the fires, was self certification for small projects. And apparently, a lot of cities do that. Hot water heaters, best example. You have a licensed plumber put it in, you get a permit, you take a picture of it, city signs off on it, you got an approved hot water heater. That's quite a bit different than your house. The article then goes on, after it kind of talks about self certification, to a heading that says, proceed at your own risk. Los Angeles already allows contractors to go ahead with limited maintenance, heating, and air conditioning systems, work, and roofing without a city issued go-ahead, go-ahead. Inspections and any necessary fees occur after the fact. The City of Bellflower, packed into just six square miles in southwest LA County, has been allowing virtually all construction projects to go ahead on a self certification for a decade. And this is a quote from the city manager. "If a project architect or engineer is willing to put their license and their stamp of a set of plans and say this meets the building code, and we're ready to build it, then let's get out of their way and give them the ability to start at their own risk." Then he says, "The risk is considerable. If problems emerge after construction begins, the owner is on the hook for them. In practice, this has meant that very few projects go the self certification route, and a few that are relatively straightforward. Developers are told, proceed at your own risk effectively, said Smoot. Those without the stomach to do it, do so are invited to go through the standard permitting process and then don't complain about it when it takes a little longer to do the reviews than you like." The implication is, Bellflower's got it, but nobody uses it. Then you go over to building departments from Chicago to New York, and Dallas afford a degree of self permitting construction projects. Oh, I'm having trouble reading this because it's such small print. But few in California are willing to put quite so much faith in a project's architect or engineer, no matter what their license or experience. Even development-friendly San Diego, which has a self certification option for solar installations and office remodels, letting developers start a construction on an entire new house without the city's once-over is a bridge too far. This is a quote. "From my experience, we've never seen a brand-new building from ground up that is perfect submittal that did not have any health or safety issues," says Kelly Charles, the city's chief building official. That's Yolanda's version in San Diego. Smoot and Bellflower said the costly redos are exceedingly rare, if only because most developers actually, because most developers don't actually opt for self certification. In Phoenix, Arizona, which has a similarly permissive self certification program, uptake is also on the low end. Evidently, builders often prefer to have someone double-check their work. Then it gets into, how do you speed up the process? And basically, what it is, says, "What might work in a sprawling valley like Phoenix area or a flat suburb like Bellflower may not work evenly across Los Angeles with hillside developments facing seismic and wildfire risk," said Stephen Summers, the CEO of Crest Real Estate, which consults with developers to navigate the city's lengthy building process. "The solution," he says, "is simply simplifying the code or outsourcing more reviews to increase bandwidth and staffing," which I think the city has done. "There's a better solution than handling regulatory oversight to someone working on a project itself who may have a financial motivation to make the process go quicker than it should." Now, I'll tell you from my vision of this, who's going to, this talks more about production management, industrial management. When do you want to find out that you've built it wrong? You want to find out when you've got it down the end of the assembly line and it doesn't start? Or do you want to make sure you planned it out in advance? This is the lesson learned in the car business with Toyota and against the Detroit manufacturers. Or they adopted the Toyota system of intensive pre-planning and checking. One car out of seven wouldn't start at the end of an assembly line in Detroit. Toyota's started every time. Now, if you look at how this has changed, it's planning, testing, checking, and the quality comes out at the other end. Do you want to find out that the first time the city has looked at your, your work of your architect or whoever certified the plans and gave you the permit, is when you're actually building something? And that slab that you thought was supposed to be six inches thick, according to the code, is now only four inches thick. What are you going to do? Rip it out? That's right. So, the time saved may not be worth what you save. And that's my perspective on this. And Yolanda, I didn't mean to jump on it, but that's my point. I took your time.
Okay. So, it's all a matter of perspective. You know, there are people that absolutely love our president, and no matter what he says, they see great things in what he says. And there are people that hate him. And no matter what he says, the exact same speech, they see all the problems in it. I read this article. This article, by the way, doesn't take a position. This article sets forth things that various people have said. I read this article and I came away completely different position than Doug did, because I came with it thinking I like the concept of self certification. And I read this and didn't see anything that said anything bad about it and actually had words to promote it, words that Doug didn't read just now. Doug came at it with a predisposition to be opposed to it, and he saw the things in it that supported his perspective. So that's number one. Number two, the City of Los Angeles is more than exploring it. There was an executive order entered by the, by the mayor that says they're going to pursue it. The specifics haven't yet been ironed out, but it's being pursued. It exists, it exists in other cities. So, I discount anyone that would, the argument that it's illegal, unless all these other cities that are doing it are acting in violation of state law, then it's legal. I wouldn't advocate that we go beyond what others have done, because I presume that the staff of the City of Los Angeles and the staff of the City of San Diego has studied the law better than we're going to be capable of studying the law. And they have come to the conclusion that whatever minimal self certification they permit doesn't violate state law. I'm willing to accept that conclusion. I wouldn't want to start, start going beyond that, because I don't know whether it would go beyond the law or not. That's two. Three, all of these arguments about why it might be a problem for you if you were to self-certify if we permit it, those are paternalistic. Those should be your decision to make, not our decision to make. No one is going to be forced to self-certify. If we permit self-certification, it's, it's an option that's available to the homeowner that is in addition to following the city's approach. So, if it's legal, and if it's not mandatory, I don't understand. Unless, unless somebody can show me that there are examples of areas where it has caused meaningful problems and safety problems, then I say, why not give people the opportunity to see if it works for them if they want it? I'll stop at that for now.
One quick thing, I think Yolanda was very clear that the state law neither says you can or can't do this. But I also want to toss in one other thing. I checked with title insurance company Fidelity. And the requirement for a self-certified building permit is that the city require a statement that the homeowner, the owner of the property, indemnifies all future owners from any issues that come out of the self-certification. And that goes with your title report forever. So that is, that is on your title report that you self-certified, and it may or may not have complied with the building codes.
But once again, you don't have to do it, and you can choose.
It's a free country.
And you asked for some examples. And I thought we had some examples in one of the most recent city council meetings we had, where we were talking about the positioning a home next to a stream, whether it was too close or too far away. And what we learned was, everybody has a different interpretation of what it means. And we're going to be faced with a lot of that if we get self, self-certification. And I think that's a problem. And I'm going to pick on Doug for a second. Doug self-certified, self-certified the Malibu motel. You guys happy with that? All right. I mean, that's, that's, look, everybody's going to try and get what they, they're going to try and take care of the person who they're working for. And it's risky. And I just don't think it's, it's, look, I got staff. I mean, we're paying these people money to do their job they're supposed to be doing. If we go to them and say, you don't have to do it anymore, we're going to have to get somebody else, why are they going to hang around? Right? Why would they sit around? And so I just think it's a bad idea. I think we stick with what we got because it's working and, you know.
So, once again, we're, we're not talking about new development. We're not talking about building on a burned lot, a completely different project, 125, 150%, whatever. We're not talking about substantially moving it. We're talking only about homes that were burned by a catastrophe. We're talking only about those that were burned in which the owner is going to build back like for like. So, the, the, all the, the two examples Steve gave are both examples of new development, which actually required a variance in both instances. It wasn't even, it wasn't even a clean sheet project. They were both required variances. Nobody is suggesting that anybody should get to self-certify their entitlement to a variance. All we're talking about right now, and again, we've got to keep, keep the focus on that, is like-for-like rebuilds of homes that were taken away by nature or by someone that lit a match, or who knows what it was, but not by the own homeowner, not someone who chose to do something different. And we're not talking about design plans. They're going to, they're going to, they're going to get their like, we're going to get the fact that it's like-for-like certified by the city in the first instance. We're talking about where are you off to the races from that point forward. And I come back to, yes, these codes are all there for a reason. Yes, we want to make sure people build safe in the first Yes, we want to make sure people build safe in the first instance, but we had 700 homes that were sufficiently safe that nobody was recommending they be raised. They were perfectly fine the day before the fire. They were going to be perfectly fine the day after the fire. They'd be perfectly fine today. They'd be perfectly fine a year from now and probably 10 years from now. And all of these rules that we have in place are preventing people from getting back what they had as quickly, as efficiently, and as inexpensively as they can with constrained resources. So, as Abe pointed out, and I think he's right, I mean, you know, I don't know enough about these specific rules, but, you know, doctors have different approaches. A very competent doctor may decide he needs 10 different tests, he or she needs 10 different tests, before they can make a decision as to a proper treatment. Another doctor might say, I think this test is really all I need to do. This test is sufficient. They're both following the law. They're both, they're both using a minimum standard of care that's required by the law. The one that requires the 10 tests is become, is over-cautious and conservative, and maybe that's a better approach, but the law didn't require the 10 tests. The law required the one test. The law requires basically that the expert be satisfied that what's being done is right. And the city's experts appropriately require 10 tests. They want to make sure it's absolutely right. They want to err in the favor of conservatism. I suspect a lot of the people that our homeowners are going to hire also will be equally conservative, in which case getting self-certification is not going to buy them anything. But there are others who are going to be less conservative. They're still acting within the law, because the law allows a range of conservatism or lack thereof. And homeowners should have the option, where they're rebuilding like-for-like on a house that was destroyed by the fire, not where they want to build a new house, not where they want to tear down a house and build the same thing, but where they're rebuilding like-for-like on a house that was destroyed by the Palisades fire and maybe the other fires, to be able to take someone who's less conservative, who's willing to put their license on the line and their insurance on the line, and say this complies with the building code.
Thanks. I see both sides of the equation.
Just to say one thing.
We have public comment. I'm just trying to.
We've got public comments. Just one quick thing. I just want to clarify, Bruce, when you say like-for-like, doesn't mean you're gonna put the same house back. You've got a bulk area, you can build any house you want to, and your comment about tear down a house and do a rebuild, that's in fact what we have here. So, it's a brand-new set of plans. Halen, I'm sorry, I keep.
Okay, that's okay. I see both sides. I think the self-certification is an answer to our code fetish in this state. We're having a housing crisis. I'm still jury's out, but I would love to hear from the public.
Five o'clock, but let's, let's try and move this quickly. We've got a large number of people, so please try and keep it to one minute or so. Say your piece, and please move on. I'm gonna start from the left side this time. Go ahead.
Yeah, I think council has an opportunity to take some, importantly, not all, of the burden off of city staff here. Most of the topics we've talked about for the last couple of months have been concerning money. This one, self-certification, I don't really see as saving anybody any money, but it will save time. The city has limited bandwidth. Wolsey wasn't a disastrous process because staff was moving slow or they were just lazy. They don't have the capacity, and I see no reason to believe that they will have the capacity this time, besides vague promises to streamline. I find showing third-world pictures of disasters disingenuous. Yes, the 2022 building code would prevent those disasters, but so would the 1993 building code. Our houses weren't going to collapse like that if a 7.0 hit on Christmas. We all know that. They wouldn't collapse like that if we rebuilt them tomorrow exactly as they were. I was just at the Santa Monica Pier this weekend. That entire thing is built on timber piles. Thousands of people walk across it every day. It's not being condemned or shuttered to be renovated. So, thank you.
Okay. On my right.
Yeah, Marissa, sorry, Marissa Coughlin. The issue of self-certification, at the last meeting that you had, I told you about what happened in New York. In 2006 to 2011, they had self-certified, all 55 structures had to be, the people had to move out of them and everything. They had to go back. They were all re-inspected, and everybody that signed the self-certification had their license suspended for three years. Okay? I don't know why we get up and talk and nobody remembers anything. It's also really problematic. That's not a cure to the end, to our council member Conrad's comments. It's not a quick resolution. Nothing good is worth having if you don't fight for it. Their codes are consistent. I work all over the country, and even out of the country, they have codes. And there's a reason. I want to see these people rebuilt. When I had my disaster that Caltrans caused in 78, didn't get help, didn't get money, didn't do anything, all out of pocket for me, total house. But I got a three-story from a one thanks to the Coastal Commission. So, I mean, it's really, really important that you stick to the target, and I know Bruce is trying to make a good case, I think he's helping, but I don't think he's helping. Thank you.
On my left.
With all due respect, Marissa, we're not talking about that kind of self-certification to begin with. The way construction works is every step of the way, you dig for foundations, you call for an inspection, you set rebars, you call for an inspection, you pour concrete, you call for an inspection. Building inspection is not going away. You landed at the point that you made about the size of rebars, yeah, the building inspector will catch that. So, Doug, with due respect, it's not the end of the assembly line. We're not talking about negating building inspections, and somehow we are getting the ideas convoluted that the building's safety and integrity will be compromised with self-certification. That's just not the way construction works. Every step of the way, there is an inspection from the city, by the city, and that will continue, and that's extremely useful as a builder. I will attest to that.
On my right.
Darren Graves. Firstly, I think what you're doing is fabulous. This is a horrible situation we're in. By comparison, city of Santa Rosa went through the same thing after the Tubbs fire, and in my judgment, they probably handled it the best so far. You guys are probably going to beat them, but by the numbers, 3,000 houses burnt down in that fire, 1,200 of them were in Coffee Park. By 2019, 1,158 were rebuilt in Coffee Park. I do not think they used self-certification as part of their process. I do think they utilized electronic plan review. They hired consultants who were licensed engineers and architects to help the city staff get through the planning process. As it relates to self-certification, up on the bluffs, somewhere in greenfields, I don't mind, but personally, I would have an issue with it on beachfront properties. The neighbor of our house, for 15 years, he put an illegal hot tub on his balcony. It caused structural displacement of his house, ended up damaging our house. If somebody self-certifies a house on the beach, there's not going to be enough distance between adjacent parcels. If their house falls down, it's going to destroy my house. So, thank you.
On my left.
All right. Doug Burge, local Malibu architect. Self-certification, the general point is, is if it saves time without sacrifice or quality or code compliance, then it's something to consider. Malibu is complex, complex is Malibu. So, that's been tossed around, because it's the case that we have to look at it that way. Other states do use it successfully. I'm licensed in over six states, and we've used it in other states. But in this case, when you're dealing with the fire rebuild complexities and the complexities of Malibu, my personal opinion is that I don't think it's critical or necessary. I'm just going to state that. But there is a reason to use it, and that's why other places are considering that. But because Malibu, where we are today, in my experience and working here all these years, this is something that doesn't necessarily save the time. But I do have the point that I want to bring up. We were talking about building inspectors, is that the self-inspectors or deputy inspectors, which is something Yolanda was talking to me about. I still think we should talk about that, because it's still a state-certified building inspector. If it saves time for the homeowner, that's the reason to use and do any of this. If it saves them money and time, that's the only reason we should be considering this. Thank you.
On my right.
Hi, counsel. Apologies from my voice. I think that the more eyes that look at a project is always better. But I'm not opposed to self-certification. I think your property, your choice. But at the same time, I personally like when my plans have been reviewed, because that means that it's a stamp of quality. I have a question for Trevor, though. Do we have more liability or less if we are self-certified? In other words, if a problem happens, so there's a concept, statute of limitations, right? If there's a leak on a house, the owner sues the contractor after five years, up to 10 years, and then the contractor sues the architect, and the plans were reviewed by building safety, they are not liable. We are still. So, I don't see any, any problem in terms of liability, other than your errors and omissions policy has to be updated. And then, lastly, I also work in different jurisdictions. We have the best staff. We just need to help them get a bit better organized and more digital, and maybe not require MVPs, but that's for another day. Thank you.
All right. On my left.
Okay. I did a little research on that, and I called my insurance and asked them, and they said, your premium will not, so basically, I will keep paying the same errors and omission insurance, but I will have to have third-party review, so I can hire my own third-party review that I can trust, could be True Nord, my guy, at True Nord or whatever. But they told me if I don't have a third-party review, that I will have to add additional letter that says that I'm complying with all building codes and blah, 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 regulation, everything. If I'm not wrong, slide before, Yolanda just pointed out that building code does not allow self-certification. Am I right here or not?
It doesn't prohibit. It doesn't state anything about it.
Okay, so we have open hands. That's, that's good. Another thing that, because I run all my projects through all departments, so I know exactly how, where is choking point, I don't think a plan check is a choking point. I think plan check is pretty quick, in my opinion. I usually go one time, get my, get my comments, address them, submit them, and done. I don't think that's the problem there. I think all other departments, like, sorry, Rob, Public Works, Geo Coastal, Environmental Health became pretty quick, but those are a few other departments that you have to wait, even though I have, usually my plan check is done, but I'm waiting on all other departments. It can take months or two. So, I, I mean, I'm open for it, of course, if someone wants to take that liability. I don't, I think just as a licensed architect, you're always liable. Doesn't matter who stays behind. Your pointed finger, you always drug into some lawsuit if that happened, of course, So, I, I'm just saying, I don't know how much time, because if you, we do self-certification, I think, first of all, we'll have to find a structural engineer who will do that, MEP engineers who will do that. Now, I will still have to go to Mike and ask him, hey, I need Geo Source review, environmental health I need. So, and that's the way the time is, where we're waiting mostly. So, that's kind of my dissent.
Thank you. On my right.
So, the solution that you guys can enact is you remove or waive any discretionary things that are not defined in the code. There are, I mean, there, our experts can give the reports as per the codes, and if they want to review them, it's fine, but they can't ask for additional things on top of the codes. A rebuild manager can do an audit, if you vote for that on Monday, to decide, to see where these delays are happening, these bottlenecks are happening, if it's in Geo, if it's in Public Works, if it's in Fire, and they can figure it out. But if you guys, and when you know what it is, you can waive whatever that problem is. Did you listen to Janet Falk? Mike Phipps just said that there, a limited report is all that's needed for most of Big Rock, but Janet said that Al Bressard is suddenly requiring caissons and 10-foot retaining walls, like things that are not, I don't know what, I'm sure his engineering geologist and engineer didn't require that. So, why is our department requiring this when it's not to the code?
And I just want to respond to that, because we have not received any building, building plan checks submitted for the rebuild, so I don't know how that was communicated to the homeowner, but I'm willing to sit up at that time and talk about it.
But just remove anything discretionary.
Yeah, we have not received any.
Thank you.
On my left.
Thank you. First, I want to comment on the geology portion. We spent a lot of time on something that has no consequence. There is no structural engineer that I know of will certify or approve something without geology, but we just spent all that time. On this issue, if the professionals don't think it's going to move forward, I agree with you. If they think it will, I agree with Bruce. I'm up in the air. What's more important is what Doug brought up. The delays in building in Malibu are legendary. I've built in Santa Monica, which before Malibu held a record. Example, plumber does a rough plumbing, takes three weeks for inspection, the plumber's left the job, the drywaller is delayed. Plumber comes, inspector comes, has a minor change, plumber can't get back, he's on another job. This is a snowball effect. We cannot do this for 700 homes. What we have to do is consider state, and it's not state, they're county-certified building inspectors. There are certain things you must have as deputy inspector. You cannot do steelwork without it. I am urging Yolanda to consider this as an operational change in the way Malibu builds. Thank you.
Okay, on my right.
Good afternoon. My name came up several times during the April 3 meeting, so I just wanted to officially introduce myself. My name is Jonathan Glassman. My name came up during this talk about using AI for, to facilitate the self-certification aspect of things. A lot of work that I do is in the space of building AI solutions for public and private sector, evaluate when they fail. They've been failing a lot lately. And also advising people about when and when not to use it. So, I just wanted to comment on the use of AI again for, for self-certification, some of the pitfalls that we've seen. First of all, the solutions that were being suggested, they are reliant on methodologies that we can't actually formally validate, which is why we don't typically use generative AI for safety critical operations. Second thing is, I looked at, I think one of the solutions I was suggesting was supposed to be a COTS commercial off-the-shelf solution, but from what I can kind of glean from how the product works, it's actually going to be some hidden costs on the city, so something to consider. And lastly, I think that some of the solutions to your rate-limiting steps probably are technological internal, rather than having to rely on something external. So, thank you.
Thank you. On my left, please.
I'd like to second what Doug said, and I think giving people the option of self-certifying, not for foundations and not for geology, but for anything above the ground, to, if they want to hire a third-party certified company to help with their own plan check, they should be allowed to do that, and in the building phase. It's worked out very good, and clients have the ability to pay that extra money to expedite the process, because obviously, we know the city is going to be, they're not overwhelmed yet, they will be very soon as the remainder of the projects start to file in. Thank you.
On my right.
Just my question to Trevor about liability.
Want me to answer the question? Sure. I mean, it's going to depend on what type of self-certification there is, but we would, of course, include the same indemn provisions that we do for all of our, you know, permitting. So, you could get sued if there are problems. You know, the city may be sued, but then it would come after the.
But without self-certification, is the city liable about anything, even if they approve the plans? I don't think so.
No, we would, I mean, you're the one that's building your property, you're the one making the plans. The city is not a guarantor of anybody's property that they're going to put forward.
So, is the same thing as being self-certified?
It depends. I mean, if there's a problem, and if there are more problems generated from self-certification, I'm saying there are, then it could generate more people that would bring a lawsuit against the city, but I think it would be not well-placed or not well-based in the law.
Thank you. All right. We need to bring it back up here to the council. Do we have a straw vote on self-certification or not?
Yeah, I'm not saying of self-certification.
I'm still, I'm still thinking about it. Honestly, it's a mixed bag. I don't have an answer, and that should be fair, and that should be okay.
Okay. All right, Bruce.
I think we should do the minimum of what other large cities in Southern California are doing. You mentioned, I think there are limitations on what can be self-certified. Even there, certain areas, beachfront, maybe not eligible, so there's no reason to be worried about whether the beachfront people will abuse it if they're not even allowed to use it. So, you follow, follow the roadmap that other experts who've spent a lot of money and who have much larger staffs, legal and professional, have explored. Make it an option. You're going to have inspections all along the way, as Abe said. It's simply one more tool in the chest that can be used by our homeowners to try to get their homes rebuilt. It may actually not get them anything, but in which case, they won't use it. But it's a tool that's sitting there, and it could be used or not used, and it's not going to hurt anybody to let them use it. going to hurt anybody to let them use it.
Okay, I'm with Steve on this. I don't see self certification benefiting anyone, and I think it's actually a potential for harm. The last thing you want, if you're a neighbor, is to have a house that was self certified and has a problem and that you're going to impact your home. That's where the cities let you down. And I think that's one of the things we have to remember is that, yes, these are professionals. But if they were, if they were so perfect, there wouldn't be corrections on the plans. So it's that second set of eyes. It's just like it's just like in in finance. We have auditors come back and check the accounting work of CPAs. It's because that second set of eyes on something that can last 100 years and can cause virtually your entire life savings. What's the harm in having a few extra days for an extra set of eyes to make sure it's right?
And so does this mean that this case is closed or?
We're going to, we're going to do a vote on it and if we.
Right now?
Yeah, we're going to see, going to see what the consensus.
Straw poll.
Straw poll, yeah.
Helen, it's pretty obvious. I mean.
On self certification.
Two no's, one yes.
What if I go yes?
If you go yes, then Mary Ann ultimately will be the tiebreaker. If you say no, we're kind of done.
I mean, I just, I, I think it's okay. I think I'm going to be a yes. And I think that let Mary Ann have some say in this.
All right, we have completed the agenda for today. This is, I think, the last one of these sessions that we have planned. I want to appreciate, I want everybody to know that we appreciate the staff's bearing with us on this. And if nothing else, we validated and sort of flushed everything out and hopefully this has got some good guidance. But this doesn't say we're not going to come back and try and make it better. So everybody understand, if we've got issues, we're going to fix them because the objective is to get you back in your house, not to make you run through a maze. So the whole idea of the rebuild center is to get is to get this on the kitty up and get it done. All right? Thank you all very much.
Mayor, before the meeting adjourns.
Can we get clarification on what that direction was? Was it to return at another special meeting for discussion or?
We don't have any further special meetings. I think the, yeah, we'll do it. Next thing we have is the council meeting to talk about sewers and septic systems. But this is, we can talk about it on Monday if we need to, but right now there doesn't seem to be a.
Yeah, when you say talk about Monday, do you mean whether to set this up for another work session?
Do we have another work session scheduled?
The next.
The Thursdays that we don't have.
We can't vote on it.
Are you bringing this back for an up or down vote on self certification at a regular meeting?
Well, they need to have consent. We don't have a motion to do that at this point. There's you have two and two, there's no action that's been approved. So if you want to bring this back for, you want to have an item brought back about whether to direct staff to bring back a proposal for self certification, you want to have that brought back.
At a regular council meeting.
Okay, now I understand. Is that the consensus, everybody?
I just want clarity on this, just because I'm sorry, I just need clarity on this. Are we bringing something back to you with the proposal or were you still gonna?
No, the my understanding is that is that this will be brought back with.
Oh, can we please have some some quiet? We're trying to get some clarity on next direction. Thank you so much.
The the item for the council to decide is whether to direct staff to bring back a self certification proposal. So that would be what be put on the agenda and then if they approve that, then staff to to go forward and bring forth a proposal.
Do I have to do another presentation?
No, no, no.
It's already been presented. It's it's whether you want to go forward and direct staff to actually create the self certification.
It's an upper down vote. It you don't have to do anything. It's just to decide if we're going to bring it back. If we're going to bring it back, it means we'll probably approve it. But we'll see if we have to vote.